All right, let's call tonight's meeting to order. Will the recorder call the roll?
President.
Counselor Hassan.
Here.
Counselor Mitchell.
Here.
Counselor Sancici.
I'm here.
Counselor Tivnan.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. It also says my computer is running low on power. I don't know if it's not plugged in. We'll fix it. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna start with teaching the mayor how to plug in the computer. So now it's on full public display. I am tech-dependent, but not tech-savvy, and we are ready to roll now. Okay, we are gonna start tonight off with our public visitor comment. And just a reminder, public comment is meant to be one-directional from you to the council. It is our standard practice to not speak back during visitor comment period, but our city manager and city attorney and recorder are all here tonight for any follow-up. So I do know that we have one ready to go. Kathy, you have three minutes to address the council when you are ready.
Yes, you can hear me, I'll bet.
We can.
Oh, thank you. Ah, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm in beautiful Illinois. A couple of weeks ago during Police Academy, the SRO officer who had earlier talked with Malana Lee spoke. He had engaged with her and her worried teachers before the atrocity that took her life. All the adults had tried to get her help to no avail. He was heartbroken. After her murder, he was able to use his relationship with the students at her school to speed the process that led to the arrest of the boy who allegedly killed Malana. Family, school, police, and town are grieving, and we are grateful to the fine SRO. In the days before her death, Malana appeared to be having mental health issues. She was hurting. At the last HREC meeting, our high school member pleaded for more mental health professionals in her school. She said students are hurting. The one counselor recently added was scheduled every minute of the school day so that other students in need were unable to talk to her and to get help. Many of her classmates are indeed suffering. I wish you could have heard the words and voice of this wonderful student as she pleaded for more mental health professionals for her fellow students. Given the choice between a wonderful SRO in the schools or additional mental health professionals, I ask you to choose the preventive measure of more mental health professionals. You helped to get the SROs. You can help to get the mental health professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else waiting to address the council this evening? All right, with that, we're on to council items. Just wanted to make sure everyone saw the flag we're flying this month as you walked into City Hall. We also have our Beaverton Pride Executive Director and board members here tonight to receive the proclamation. So just want to thank council for agreeing to fly the flag. It's very meaningful, and I know we're only one of two cities in the region that are doing it right now. Any other council items? Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple tonight for you all. So the first, in to carry on what the message you just shared about flying the flag, this is the first time it's flown in our city, which is really amazing. And I would love some head nods from my colleagues to consider a resolution that we fly the flag annually and really secure that we will continue to do that, knowing that across our nation right now, people are having rights taken away and are really being subject to hate. So if y'all would consider that, we could maybe have a resolution for we fly annually in the city of Beaverton.
All right. City manager, can you prepare a resolution to come back to council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then related, we will have a city of Beaverton or a Beaverton City Council float in this year's Pride Parade. And I'm working on that, so if any of y'all want to participate and help me decorate, please let me know. I would love to have your help. Two more things, sorry. One's quick, one's not as quick. I need a substitute for the TB Highway Help Steering Committee that I sit on for the July 14th meeting. It's 4:00 to 6:00 PM. I have a conflict that day, so if anyone of my peers are available and would like to be my proxy, I'm giving lots of notice because I know the summers are busy. But myself and maybe with the help of staff, we can get you ready for that. So check your schedules. If someone's willing to do that for me, that'd be great.
Is it possible to just get a follow-up email? Because I'd have to check my calendar. Thank you.
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you. All right, last one for me. So I would actually like to propose that we consider the creation of an ordinance to ban the sale of puppies and kittens in pet stores in the city of Beaverton. We don't currently have any pet stores doing that. We have really great community partnership with our businesses that are working with rescue organizations to do adoptions. But there's kind of a growing movement to be able to sell puppies and kittens in pet stores. And so while we have none, I would really like our city to consider a ban. Bend is considering one right now. I believe someone is asking the county to consider the same. And as we talked about at one of our meetings, over the last month or two, we talked about, or maybe it was another forum, I don't remember, but we talked about how when we have local support and we use our local momentum, we can really cause great things to happen at the state and federal level. So something I'd love for us to consider, especially right now, it doesn't affect anyone's business because no one's doing it. But that's something I would like for us to do as a council, is to do that. And I can provide more information about it. But I know that there is community support for it in our city as well.
So I think, were you asking for a work session for us to? I think like I personally would need a little bit more information.
Sure.
Yeah.
You're raising your hand over there. Go ahead.
I mean, I would just need to know more, so.
Can we schedule it as a work session item to come back sometime? Okay.
Thank you.
Put that on the list. Okay, anything else, Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg, you'd like us to do this evening while you have the mic? Okay. So ordinance, ordinance work session. All right, we got our summer workload from you. Counselor Hassan?
Actually, interestingly enough, so I'm really excited that we are flying the Pride Flag. I'd like to make sure that we're thinking of like the procedures and processes and how we do these things so that we are making sure everyone knows the processes and procedures. So one thing that's just been on my mind is like how we bring resolutions and proclamations, like on behalf of us. I know the mayor is able to do that. So it sounds like, generally speaking, if the council wants to have a resolution, this is the time to discuss it. Is that fair? Okay. Thank you. I do want us to just maybe, I don't know if we need to talk about this, but just talk about like what this looks like. I feel like one of the things that in this new form of government like I'm struggling with is like what all of us are doing in our different boards and commissions. And so finding a way to have like liaison updates, whether that's within council items or a part of council items. I think much of our work requires us to like say like, here's what I'm hearing in this meeting, or here's what I'm hearing in this meeting, and what are you hearing? And so finding a way to either formally look at our rules and procedures to say we want to add liaison updates or making sure that in council items, we're discussing the things that we're hearing in our community. And it gets really important, not just in this forum, for everyone to hear what we're hearing, but for us to be like listening to each other to know what other people are hearing. So I'll pause and like see if anyone has any comment. Okay, see a thumbs up.
I think we had done that in the past, and it became very much like people making stuff up on the fly. So I think it would be helpful to maybe create a report-out form or something that has a kind of a flow to it. Because what I think is, some people are naturally good at it. I think you would probably be very good at it, but not everyone has that skill. So I think if I would be, I would like that if we can put some structure behind it. And not everyone may be comfortable doing it in this setting, so some people prefer. Mark writes them. And so just I think if we started with maybe a form or something like that to kind of just like, here's things that are new, because what we don't want to spend is an hour going over. I heard these like that aren't relevant to the work we're doing. So in the essence of these meetings can get very long, like I would like us to think about that piece. Like, is it new? What are we doing? And I think a form might help structure how we do reporting out. And then, of course, we can always change it or adapt, but somewhere to start, so we all are kind of bringing forward similar information, I think would be the most helpful.
Well, I'll add the note that one of the things that used to happen, hasn't happened in quite a long time, is that we did this every couple, three, four months at roundtables. And we would take half an hour and just share information about things going on, both in external and city committees. And just say, here's some things that have been going on lately that might be interesting for us to pursue or to dig into further. But you know, I think we still have to get back into a habit of using roundtables for roundtable purposes. And right now, that's, you know, up in the air, so.
I wonder like if we should, I don't know if it's just looking at our rules and procedures or like documenting more around this. Because I do think, I hear your point around the way to share, but I do think this is the best way for us to like let folks know like what we're hearing. I don't think we need to start it today, but I do think that it would be helpful. So I don't know. Do you have any thoughts?
Your best practices.
I think I can go ahead and take a look at the rules and procedure. I know at your last retreat, you did have some notes on some very kind of low-hanging fruit updates, so happy to do that. And typically, based on the definition now, your council items is actually the time to do it. And then you also have a council kind of new business at the end of the meeting, too. So it's really clarifying, what do you use those kind of headers for on the agenda? And I'm happy to do that, and also, Mayor, happy to go back and provide some suggestions on formatting to help the council with any kind of report out that they have.
And maybe we could, since we have multiple meetings, maybe we could trade off who's reporting out when. That way, it's not all expect, because if you meet on the first of the month and we don't go again, and it's a whole month, you're not gonna remember everything. So maybe we could work on some kind of even odd seat reporting out at every other meeting.
Thanks. That's it.
Anything else, Counselor Hassan?
That's all. Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to say that I'm also very excited that we're flying the flag. And I want to second Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg's annual schedule. I think we should do it. And also, Counselor Hassan, you know, I absolutely agree, we need some protocol around this just to make sure that we're not introducing liability to our city in a way that leaves us exposed. And right now, we are, you know, and I think that what I'm requesting is that we get a work session as quickly as possible so we can close that gap in the sense that if other people come forward and they want to fly flags, that we can have a protocol, a procedure that says, okay, this is in favoritism. This is exactly how we do it and when. And I just want to make sure that we also follow all the state regulations with regard to what's flying on the flagpole. And I think this is a great time to do this, creating the procedures. But also, we need to, and I know I've brought this up a few times, we need to think about our council procedures, because this goes hand in hands. Like, what does the city manager do? What do the counselors do? You know, are we going to have the city manager go ahead and based upon our thumbs up, we have the majority, do we go supermajority? And then she executes and makes sure that, hey, we get the flag up there. You know, we just want to make sure it's very clear. And this is a really good opportunity to kind of baby step through it. I understand we have a lot to tackle, but just the baby steps would be a really great start.
So I'm clear, you're asking, you're just seconding Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg's suggestion on the ordinance for the flag? Are you asking for something else?
No, I'm seconding that, and I'm also requesting a work session to what Counselor Hassan said about having procedures and rules put in place for any flag requests. You know, what does that look like? Do they come to us? Do they go to her? Like, and I think that clarity will really be, it will really close up the liability gap that could be open.
And flying the flag is not the city manager. It'd be the council's discretion to do that?
Well, then we have to put it in writing because it's not clear. And we have a lot of ambiguity that is causing a lot of tension.
So if I can just jump in, so what I think I'm hearing, I'm hearing is that really it's appropriate to have a flag policy, which would be adopted by the council. You set the ground rules on how that works. And then I have the tools to be able to make those operational choices based on your direction. So that would be a next step. I can get a resolution to this council for the 21st. Then I'll work with the city attorney on a flag policy, and we'll bring that before you.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other items? All right, staff items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we have a special guest with us this evening. I'd like to introduce Chief Stacy Jepson, who is our new interim police chief. And Stacy joins us from the city of Eugene. She has a tremendous amount of experience. She served as deputy chief. And she's also homegrown. She's from Springfield, began her career in Shearwood. She also has two decades with the ranks of Hillsborough. And we are so glad that she is with us, and she's right behind me on my left-hand side, so if you'd like to say hi, Chief Jepson, that'd be great.
Do I need to, no, I don't need to push the button. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, and thank you for the introduction. I have been here all of 16 hours, so I'm trying to get acclimated. And I appreciate the fact that I'm here and in person with everyone and excited to get started and hopefully get to know each and every one of you more in the weeks ahead. And my hope is, is that I can carve out some time to meet with each of you individually and get to know you. So I look forward to that.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna exercise some meeting agenda movement and move our proclamations to the top ahead of consent, since we have an audience with us tonight. So I'm gonna start the night out with a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the city of Beaverton is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and mutual respect as fundamental aspects of a healthy community. And whereas the presence, visibility, and celebration of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual plus community enhances the quality of life in the city of Beaverton. And whereas gay pride events are held in June to commemorate the night, or the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall riots that were sparked in response to ongoing police harassment of New York gay community, and were also the catalyst for establishing safe places for gay and lesbian people to be open about their sexual orientation without fear of being arrested or imprisoned. And whereas before the Stonewall riots, there was August 1966 Compton Cafeteria riots, which were responding to the violent and constant police harassment of drag queens and trans people, particularly trans women, led by people of color in an attempt to protect themselves and their community. Whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has been the target of discrimination and violence based on gender, sexual orientation, identity, and perceived identity, which conflicts with Beaverton's core values as a community. And whereas the LGBTQI+ rights are human rights. And whereas the country has witnessed a significant amount of anti-trans legislation that seeks to regard the LGBTQI+ community as lesser. And whereas gay pride events are intended to celebrate visibility and diversity, as well as educate and foster engagement. And whereas the city of Beaverton strives to be welcoming and safe place where people, families, institutions thrive, contributions of all celebrated and valued. Whereas the city of Beaverton supports the LGBTQI+ Pride Month, reflecting its commitment to being an ally and supporting marginalized people's rights to love, joy, and expression. Therefore, I, Lacy Beatty, the city of Beaverton, hereby proclaim June 2020 as LGBTQI+ Pride Month in the city of Beaverton. And I know we have the Pride Executive Director here to accept the proclamation, and if you want to say a couple words, council would love to take a photo with you.
Here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, we are having our big gay Beaverton Pride Parade, and I wanted to share with you why we say gay. This year, Pride Beaverton has made a point of using the word gay a lot. On June 26, 2022, we are having a big gay parade, a gay celebration, gay entertainers, and much glittery gayety in and around City Park in Beaverton. While there is no doubt that LGBTQA pride celebrations are joyous, vibrant, widespread, and occur internationally, they are only a small representation of what it means to live life as a member of the LGBTQA community. At Pride Beaverton, we have decided to say gay as many times as we can to help counter the craziness of the world. We want to let the political forces that would minimize the importance of our gay families, gay love, gay existence, know that we will not fade away quietly nor retreat to the shadows. We are gay and we are proud. We are gay and our lives are valid. We are gay and our contributions are meaningful. We are gay and our love is real. We are gay and our families deserve equity and respect. We will not stand by as elected officials actively legislate against our rights to live, be married, be parents, be safe, have bodily autonomy, be medically respected, be recognized, and just be gay. This isn't about comfort or lifestyle choice. This is life and death for our community. This is about gay lives being shortchanged and sacrificed because of bigotry and dogma. Pride Beaverton stands with the gay community, every single letter of it, but we do not represent the gay community. The gay community is far grander, more diverse, and more important than any one group, parade, or person. The gay community is being painted with a broad brush, a homogenization of homosexuality, and that is not okay. So we ask you, friends and allies, for the gay people you know, and especially the gay ones that you are not aware of, to stand up against discrimination in all its shades. Let your elected leaders know that gay people are important. Let them know that bodily autonomy should belong to the body in question, not to a legislative body. That gay life, gay love, and gay people deserve every bit of fight and protection as others. We hope to see you, councilors, at Pride in your glittering finest. While there is much work to do, there is much gay to celebrate. I would like to introduce my board members. You might recognize John Duggar, who will be joining you soon, which is my greatest, greatest pleasure. I'd like to introduce John Burkhardt. You can stand up, too. And John's husband, Quinn Simpson. Our fifth has COVID. So four out of five agree that this is a good deal. Thank you so much for allowing us to have this, and we would love to accept it and have a photo.
This might be our new councilors' first time, but generally, we go down there and take the photo. Okay, I do know we have a last-minute ad for public comment. Generally, I wouldn't allow it, but tonight I will. But we'll read our first two proclamations. I know Counselor Tivnan's agreed to read the Juneteenth one, and Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg will be reading the Immigrant Heritage Month.
My feathers were covering up my microphone. It's my honor to read this proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Independence Day, commemorates the events of June 19, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation had declared all enslaved people free nearly two and a half years earlier. And whereas, as one of the oldest American holidays, Juneteenth commemorates formerly enslaved individuals and their descendants, and has historically been a time of prayer, reflection, and family reunion. And whereas, while July 4, 1776, represents the birth of the United States of America and commemorates its independence from British rule, it did not offer independence to enslaved people. And whereas, although the Juneteenth celebration is specific to the emancipation of African descendants, its message promotes the continued freedom and economic prosperity of individuals from all races, colors, creeds, and cultures, and improves upon the nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, America must never forget or repeat its vivid and tragic events of African-American history, which exposed the dehumanizing impact of racial violence, from chattel enslavement to convict leasing, from thousands of lynchings to racial massacres like Tulsa, Oklahoma in 1921, and Rosewood, Florida in 1923, from segregation to voter disenfranchisement, from mass incarceration to wrongfully inflicted violence upon the innocent who fought for freedom as captured by media in Selma, Alabama, at the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And whereas, historically, Juneteenth observances have not always received acknowledgement or recognition through Juneteenth, though Juneteenth is a critical component of American history as it marks a turning point in the nation and a step towards equality. And whereas, on June 1, 2021, the Oregon State Senate unanimously passed House Bill 2168, making Juneteenth an official holiday in Oregon. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates the strength and resolve of Black and African-Americans throughout our history and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and numerous contributions of Black and African-Americans. And whereas, this year marks 157th commemoration of Juneteenth. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, mayor of the city of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim June 19, 2022 as Juneteenth in the city of Beaverton, and call this observance to the attention of all of our community members. Whereas, the month of June is Immigrant Heritage Month, and June 20 is World Refugee Day. And whereas, an immigrant is a person who is living in a country other than their country of birth. And immigrants in the United States may be here pursuant to different types of immigration status, including US citizenship through naturalization. And whereas, a refugee is someone who has experienced or fears persecution by their government or a force that their government cannot or will not control because of that person's race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or membership in a particular social group. And whereas, over 20,000 Beaverton, or over 20,000 people who live in Beaverton were born outside of the United States, including immigrant and refugee residents from countries from around the world that enrich our city, state, and nation by making us better, stronger, more innovative, and more prosperous. And whereas, immigrants and refugees make tremendous contributions as elected officials, public servants, teachers, artists, faith leaders, community organizers, entrepreneurs, physicians, innovators, factory workers, first responders, frontline workers, and more. Whereas, for generations and still today, immigrants and refugees are often treated as outsiders, experience exclusion and disparities in access to healthcare, education, and benefits, and are the victims of hate and discrimination in our city and across the nation. And whereas, over the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, immigrants and refugees have experienced demonization even while working in essential industries, putting their own
industries, putting their own lives at risk to support themselves and their families, and in so doing, enabling residents of Beaverton to continue to obtain essential items and services. And whereas, Immigrant Heritage Month offers opportunities to recognize the accomplishments and contributions that immigrants and their families have made in shaping our nation's history, enriching our culture, and contributing to the economy and success of the United States. And whereas, World Refugee Day commemorates the 50th anniversary of the 1951 Convention on the Status of Refugees, and provides an opportunity to recognize the strength and resilience of refugees who have fled conflict and persecution in their home countries in hopes of reaching sanctuary and a better life in the United States. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim June 22, June 2022 and June 20th, 2022, respectively, as Immigrant Heritage Month and World Refugee Day in the City of Beaverton, and urge all residents to join in this month in recommitting to our values as a welcoming city, and in celebrating immigrant and refugee cultures' heritage, leadership, stories, and resilience.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to allow a last-minute ad here for public comment, so I don't know if Ramesh. Ramesh, you have three minutes to address the council when you're ready. Okay.
Sorry about my late arrival. No excuses will make up for my tardiness, but I'm so thankful you were forgiving of that little mistake. First of all, thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I do feel a little honored and welcomed at this, at this group because so many familiar faces, friendships, and relationships. I feel privileged to have been here this evening. I come here today representing the Cultural Coalition of Washington County, a regrouping body of funds received from Oregon Cultural Trust to local arts, culture, community, and heritage organizations. I'm sure most of you have heard of Oregon Cultural Trust, and I'm also sure more of you also contribute to the Oregon Cultural Trust. If you haven't, you've probably seen those CU license plates on cars around Oregon. Any funds that come through these sources to Oregon Cultural Trust comes back to the community through the cultural coalitions here. Now, for us at the Cultural Coalition, we have a document which we call the Washington County Cultural Plan, which is kind of a guiding light for us in terms of how we equitably distribute these funds to the local organizations. We are trying to aim to have the document reflect not just the statistical indicators of the county makeup and status, but we also want to capture the expectations of the community as a whole, and the vision and thought of its leaders in particular. That plan is currently under an update. It's going through a process of making sure that it is current and currently presently reflects what is the state of the Washington County in terms of its art scenario. We are requesting the community to provide us some feedback, some inputs, and some thoughts so that we can make a good update. For that, we are conducting an online survey. And as the elected leaders representing this wonderful city of Beaverton, a microcosmic representation of the great state of Oregon, I'm requesting that all of you, as our elected leaders and representing this community, to provide us with your inputs and your thoughts on how we can update our cultural plan. The little cards that I passed on have all the information you need, probably a few more questions answered than I could have spoken about. And in keeping up with the current times, we've included a little QR code. You don't even need a laptop. You can scan it with your cell phone. It'll take you directly to that survey. It's a very short survey, simple questions. Plain English will be sufficient. And if you can, please answer those survey questions. That'll help us a lot. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. You never have to ask elected leaders to tell you their opinion. That's easy. We'll do this for you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, Council President, the consent agenda with, we're pulling 22139 from consent for discussion afterwards.
Yes, and once more, I thought we were done with this, but we have one more segregated consent agenda. So we'll begin with a motion to approve the minutes of the special meetings of May 14th, May 27th, and July 27th of 2021.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Just really quick, this is, I think, the minutes where we decided to hire a city manager, and it just makes me so happy that Jenny said yes.
There you go. All right. Any other comments on the agenda, I mean, on the motion? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Councillor Hassan.
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell.
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan.
Yes.
Councillor Sansissi.
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Epstein.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
All right, and minus Agenda Bill 22139, which we'll talk about afterwards. I will move approval of the remainder of the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the regular meetings of October 19th and October 26th of 2021, Agenda Bill 22137, liquor license new outlets for Worldwide Wines, Terun Restaurant, and La Paria Kitchen, 22138, authorize approval of the Public Library Network Services and Funding Intergovernmental Agreement with Washington County Cooperative Library Services, 22140, Traffic Commission issues TC 830, truck parking on Northwest Bethany Court, south of Cornell Road, TC 831, traffic calming plan for Southwest 155th Terrace between Southwest Snowy Owl Lane and Southwest Shoals Ferry Road, TC 832, center line on Southwest Arctic Drive, and TC 833, speed zoning on Southwest Barrows Road. Agenda Bill 22141, authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the Washington County Board of Commissioners requesting a transfer of funds from the Shoals Ferry Road Intersection Project at Teal Horizon Boulevard to the Allen Boulevard 92nd Avenue Path Project. And then, acting as the Contractor View Board, 22142, a CMGC Guaranteed Maximum Price Number Three for Construction Phase Services for the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Number Five and Sorento Pump Station Improvements Project, CIP 4021D, and the Sexton Mountain Pump Station Upgrade Phase Two, CIP 4078C. And Agenda Bill 22143, a contract amendment for NCode Plus LLC, Contract 3675-20, related to online code codification and hosting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I have one, one brief comment. I've been around long enough to have seen the discussion about truck parking on the streets south of Cornell Road appear on Traffic Commission and City Council agendas. I think this is the fourth time. It keeps moving from street to street. The Traffic Commission keeps addressing it, and it seems to me that maybe one of the things the city will ought to think about doing at some point in the future is developing a truck parking plan so we can identify where in the city it is expected that people should be able to park these semi-trucks and where they should not. Right now, it's being handled on a case-by-case basis, and that seems awfully inefficient. But I don't have any argument with this particular recommendation of the, of the Traffic Commission. I just, this is like the fourth time we've seen it in six or seven years, so.
I mean, I think that's an interesting point because I had met with the Chair of the Traffic Commission, because I think what we start to see on Traffic Commission is issues bubbling up before the council realizes their problems. This is where we started to see issues with illegal car camping. This is where we started to see those issues. So I think it's important for us to also pay attention to what's happening in Traffic Commission. I've also encouraged their Chair and Vice Chair to reach out to me when they see patterns and what's coming towards them, because this is the community's way to address issues around traffic and parking. So this is the natural way it comes to us, but the council doesn't see it until way later. Like, this is the end. This is, I think this might even be more. This is from when my husband was on the Traffic Commission. So I agree with you, and it's something we can add to Councillor Sansissi's ongoing list of things we might consider, because it is, it happens not just there. It happens off of Denny Road as well, off of major areas where truck drivers are pulling off to sleep at night. So looking at maybe some of those areas along both highways where this is happening, we see this happen a lot on Denny, but now with the redirection of 217, we might not see it there as much.
Yeah, and it's also people parking a semi-trailer for two weeks at a time when they don't have a load to carry or something like that. So we just don't have any citywide policies regarding this, and maybe it's time for us to think about that. In any case, that's all I have to say.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jabra, because I think he does a really great job of being responsive. And I was reading this, and I saw that people were saying thank you to him. And it's really cool. I talked to him the other day, and he just knows so much about our city, and I just truly appreciate him. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, will the recorder call the roll?
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Councillor Hassan.
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell.
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan.
Yes.
Councillor Sansissi.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll take Agenda Bill 22139.
Yeah, let me explain. I pulled, I pulled this one off the consent agenda to recommend a minor modification to the resolution that's included in here. I have no complaints or problems with the IGA itself. That's perfectly routine. But this particular resolution both authorizes the signing of the IGA and allows the city manager to sign future iterations of this IGA, which repeats over and over again. We get this grant on a regular basis. And I actually don't have a problem with that in general. It's just that right now we do not have a formal policy stating what the limits are on applying for grants. And there was a time in the distant past, it was a previous administration, and none of the people involved are here anymore, where a grant was applied for that required a cash match. And we didn't know about it. And it was a bit of a dust-up when we found out that we had been granted some money, but we had to pony up some cash that we didn't know about. And so we said, let's not do that anymore. And everybody agreed, we're not going to do that anymore. But we didn't write down a formal policy. So here we are, giving the city manager authorization to approve this, and the, the language doesn't really touch on the money thing. Now, this particular grant, this ODOT thing, never, has never in the past involved us ponying up cash to ship as a match. So that's why I say there's no problem with this one. But I think that two things should happen. One is I'm going to make a motion to approve this with a minor change to the resolution, just to make it really clear that we don't want future iterations of this to have a cash match, or else come back to the council and ask for authorization. And secondly, I think it would be wise for the council to ask the city manager to help us develop a formal policy regarding grants so that we don't have to bring these up on a regular basis. That it's just written down, this is how grants work in the City of Beaverton. And, you know, obviously, there'll be a lot of discussion, but I would imagine that one of the provisions of that policy would be, if there is going to be a cash match, the council has to approve that, either in advance through the budget process or through some action at a council meeting. That's, that's all. It's not a big deal. So, so let me make the motion, because there's going to be a modification to the language of the resolution. And if you look at the resolution, there's a be it resolved section that has three sections under it. There's a Section One, saying the mayor's authorized, Section Two, giving the city manager this new authorization, and a Section Three about the finance director. So this is about Section Two. So Section Two of the resolution would be reworded to read as follows, and by the way, Mr. City Attorney helped craft this language. The city manager, this is Section Two of the be it resolved, "The city manager is authorized to sign future ODOT intergovernmental agreements relating to the motor carrier safety assistance program, provided that (1) no material changes are made in future intergovernmental agreements from the intergovernmental agreement originally authorized under Section One; (2) the city attorney approves the future intergovernmental agreement as to form; (3) no matching grant or other monetary contribution is required as a condition of receiving grant revenue." So a minor modification that just makes it clear. And with that, I move the Resolution Number 4794, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to receive grant funds to enforce traffic laws related to the motor carrier assistance program, approving the acceptance of a special purchase grant and the associated appropriations in the general fund of the city during the fiscal year 2021/2022 budget year, approving the appropriations for the fund and authorizing the city manager to sign similar future intergovernmental agreements as modified by the language I just read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councillor Hassan, is it on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say I'm hearing a pattern, like a policy around flags, a policy around grants, a policy around trucks. I'm assuming we're starting some sort of a repository, because eventually we will get some support. But I would like to make sure that this comes, that once we get closer to having that support, that we're able to identify what policy priorities we want this person to work on.
Yep.
Councillor Mitchell.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Councillor Sansissi, for catching that. It's such, it seems so small, but it is so huge. And you, when you read through that, you don't really think about that right out of the gate, and so just thank you for that.
Well, you know, and we know the city manager isn't going to be the problem. It's the next one that we have to watch out for.
Well, and this is, I was thinking about when I knew you were pulling this, about when that happened, and I think it was over five years ago.
Oh, it was like eight years ago.
Yeah, so I think just, just to demonstrate how long the council's been asking for policy. It's like, we have a really councillor, council president and I are going to sit down and write out, too, because there's just so much that we're losing with all the historical knowledge of what we've asked for in the past. That doesn't mean that's going to be what everyone does going forward, but it was meaningful at one time. So starting with the list, I think will be helpful. Any other discussion on this motion? Will the recorder call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg, anything else we could do for you?
Always. I actually just had a clar, a kind of a clarifying question. I still get to claim the new councillor card for like a couple of weeks, right? Okay. I'm just curious, so it's standard practice, right, that IGAs will come before council always? And in this case, we're delegating the authority to have city managers sign this particular IGA, right? This isn't, that's not broader than that?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, like, this feels small, right? It's a, I mean, it's a relatively low amount of money, and I just want to make sure that like, if it's council's role to make sure we're informed and approving of IGAs, that we're not like delegating that beyond this particular IGA. That's all.
And that actually suggests that someone, whether it's in the city manager's office or in the city attorney's office, or perhaps even the mayor's office, ought to be keeping track of which IGAs we have given this authorization for. Because I know we've done at least one before, maybe two, and this is either the second one or the third one. So we probably ought to keep a list someplace of.
Seems like the city attorney.
Yeah.
Office should do that.
We do have that list. We could prepare it with, and get it out to.
Oh, definitely not asking to see it, but, but somebody needs to have it. Thank you.
Yeah, because they're the ones that sign off on what has to come forward. So they seem like the appropriate level of person to track it. Councillor Hassan, is this a second comment?
Yeah, I was just, you mentioned that you're working on some policies, so I just want to make sure we all know what policies.
I'm not, we're not working on policy. We're working on a list, because what we're talking about is six years old, and none of you at this table are going to know what we asked for in the past. So we're going to work on a list to bring forward of things that past councils have asked for. That doesn't mean we're going to be held accountable to it, but it's a good place to start.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, can we call the roll?
Councillor Mitchell.
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan.
Yes.
Councillor Hassan.
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Councillor Sansissi.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, thank you. We're on to our first presentation of the evening, Agenda Bill 22144, Council Housing Talk Series Meeting Number Three. And I know we have Javier with us tonight, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Javier Mena. I'm Forevoir Housing Manager in the Community Development Department. With me is Beneth Valdez, and we are here to continue our housing conversations. Just a reminder, this is the third of seven presentations. The focus of this presentation is preservation and displacement prevention. We have a panel of experts that will be answering questions of strategies, challenges, and opportunities. Throughout the presentation, I will ask you to think about the impact that you, as council, want to have on the challenges Beaverton residents have in staying in Beaverton. want to have on the challenges Beaverton residents have in staying in Beaverton, and any strategies mentioned that are sound interesting to you. There are three questions we'll be asking the panelists. The panelists will be happy to take your comments once they have completed each round of questions. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Bienneth, and thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Glad to be back in the space and have our Housing Talk Series. Just to remind folks, my name is Bienneth Valdez. I'm the Affordable Housing Program Coordinator with our housing team. I use she-they pronouns, and gonna be introducing some great folks in the room today. We're talking about preservation and displacement prevention. We know that this is a big conversation. We know that a lot of people are doing this work, and some of them are in this room with us today, which I'm excited to introduce. But I also wanted to put a shout-out, because we know that this work is also being done with the downtown equity strategy, and they are talking a lot about displacement prevention and, you know, making a community inclusive for all. So I just want to put that plug in there, because it's a major project, and it's something that the community should know about. But this is just one conversation, so just kind of want to preface that. But yeah, I'm gonna kind of introduce folks, and I'll be your facilitator, so we'll kind of move us along. I'm gonna introduce some folks from the community who work in this work, and I think I'm gonna ask Rob if he can come on screen and mute himself and introduce himself.
Thanks, Bienneth. Good evening, Mayor Beatty and council members. Thanks for allowing me to come to speak with you tonight. My name is Rob Karasch. I'm with the Network for Oregon Affordable Housing. We're known as NOAA, and we are a statewide nonprofit that provides financing for multifamily rental properties, for rent-restricted properties, affordable. And we've been in business since around 1990. We also do quite a bit of policy work. My boss, Bill Van Vliet, who you may have met over the years, is quite active in this, in the policy sector. We have done a lot of preservation work since 19, since 2008, sorry. We have facilitated a statewide initiative called the Oregon Housing Preservation Project that has focused on preserving at-risk, expiring, affordable rental housing, and a lot of it with subsidies. So we have financed a number of properties in Beaverton over the years, including most recently, the Barcelona, Cedar Grove, the Mary Ann, and Pomeroy Place.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you, Rob. Betsy, do you want to unmute and share who you are?
Hello. Yeah, thank you for having us. I'm Betsy with Community Action. I'm one of the supervisors for the emergency rent team here at Community Action. And in my part of the organization, we've had, like, emergency rent teams specifically for the past two years about, since COVID, basically. And like before that, it was just like a once-a-month thing, so we've expanded a lot since then. And as an organization, we have, like, a lot of different parts, and that's why there's multiple of us here. Thank you.
Yes, there's a big representation from Community Action, because we know they do a lot of great work. Zuli, do you want to jump on in?
Of course. Thank you so much for inviting us to be present here today. My name is Zuli Muñoz. She/her pronouns. I'm the Assistant Manager with Community Action's Energy Conservation Program. Our program provides weatherization services at no cost to households that are at or below 200% federal poverty level here in Washington County. Our program reduces low-income families' energy costs by increasing the efficiency, durability, and comfort of homes while ensuring health and safety for their residents. The program is primarily funded through federal, state, and public purpose funds. We prioritize seniors, persons with disabilities, families with children, and veterans. The Energy Conservation Program utilizes computerized energy assessments to determine class-effective measures that can be installed to a home. Typical measures include insulation, duct sealing, heating systems, EPDM roofs, exhaust vents, and windows. Our program also provides extensive education, energy education, and provides health and safety installs, such as carbon monoxide alarms and smoke alarms. Our installations are performed at no cost by licensed and bonded contractors. The Energy Conservation Program serves both homeowners and renters, and our weatherization programs have been operating in Oregon since 1979. Again, thank you for having us here.
Thank you. And last but not least, Carrie.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name's Carrie Williams. I'm one of the housing program supervisors at Community Action. We work with those who are literally homeless and those at risk of homelessness. We're kind of paired with the emergency rent team, so we and Betsy have been working alongside to support a lot of families who are at risk of losing their housing, especially through the pandemic. So, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. I'm not going to take up too much space, but just know that we are talking a lot to these folks tonight to learn about what's happening on the ground, what are the challenges, what are the programs and policies that are working, what can be improved. So I'm going to start us off with the first question. So based on your experience, what strategies have the biggest impact in helping households maintain and preserve their housing? Or what have jurisdictions done to implement and maintain and preserve affordable housing? We know mobile homes has been a big topic, and Rob, I feel like you would have some great thoughts on that. But yeah, if you could speak to that, that would be great, and then we'll kind of jump from there.
Thank you, Bienneth. Yeah, in the big picture, I'm going to be speaking about multifamily rental properties, while the others, I think, have more of a focus on homeownership and single families' rentals. But NOAA does provide a lot of financing for preservation projects, and then when I say that, I'm talking about properties with federal rental assistance contracts, which you really want to preserve at any cost, because that brings federal dollars to the state and to your community. Those should be your highest priorities to try to preserve. And there are a lot of strategies that can be adopted to help that happen. One of the things that we've done as facilitator of the Oregon Housing Preservation Project was really just copy best practices from around the country. The first thing is to really understand what your inventory looks like. You have to compile that information about the properties in your community, and which ones could potentially be at risk, either because of contracts expiring, or because of age and neglect and physical deterioration. So that's a really important thing. We've worked closely with the legislature and with the housing agencies to try to secure preservation gap financing to make these deals work, and promote preservation-focused legislation to make sure that we don't lose the housing in our communities. And Bienneth mentioned manufactured home parks. There's been a big push in our state to try to preserve manufactured home parks. NOAA finances those, either with short-term acquisition financing, just to get them in the hands of a preservation-focused nonprofit or co-op. And then the state of Oregon, through Oregon Housing Community Services, has competitive gap financing to make those permanent preservation transactions. And so far, they've preserved somewhere around, I'm going to say, 31 manufactured home parks across the state with a little over 2,000 home spaces. And I think there are maybe six or eight parks currently in the queue for preservation transactions. So happy to dig a little deeper into any of these strategies, if you like.
Who else would like to share from our panelists?
Through our weatherization assistance program, we have found that a lot of the low-income families that we are serving tend to purchase or end up in rental properties that have many structural problems that they are unable to afford for repairs. So our weatherization programs, such as the one run by Community Action, actually goes into the homes and provides those installments that really help preserve and maintain the existing affordable housing. So for example, we would go in and look at a manufacturer's home roof, and if we find that there's a leak, we are able to either use some of our funding or collaborate with some community partners to be able to go out and repair that EPDM roofs. So by us doing that, we're able to extend the lifespan of that mobile home for about 20 to 25 years. So for us, you know, just seeking that funding, really advocating for that funding, has been a really good strategy, to be able to help these clients that are in a situation where they're just not able to really afford their home and in maintaining their home. I think it's important to recognize that these families are, you know, having to make decisions on whether they're going to pay for food or pay for medication, or just defer some of the maintenance that needs to go into their home. So actually, through the city of Beaverton, we are recipients of CDBG funding that allow us to extend the work that we would normally do through the weatherization assistance programs. So again, just to recap, without these funds, our recipients would not be able to maintain their homes, and for some, this means being displaced. If they're being asked, you know, by a mobile home park, for example, to do those repairs, and they're unable to do it, that could mean they're getting evicted from the mobile home park, or they're just not safe for them to stay in their homes anymore. So again, just seeking the funds and really educating the community and decision-makers on the work that we do, and how that plays into maintaining and preserving housing.
Thanks, Zuli. Carrie or Betsy, do you want to share?
So from my end, we're more focused on the rent assistance. So if someone is, like, missing income due to, like, with the pandemic, that was a huge thing, that caused a lot of people to lose work and not be able to pay their rent. So we were able to help them stay housed by providing that rent assistance, and then once they have work again, they're able to, like, remain in their same place and not lose that stability of staying in their home, staying with neighbors they already know. And another strategy in, like, being able to reach out to a lot of people is we've got, like, culturally-specific partner agencies that will help us get connected with, like, a lot of different populations. So like, if they're not English-speaking in its first language, they, a lot of our culturally-specific partner agencies are able to reach out to them and extend us, send us people that need assistance that we might not otherwise have been able to reach. So that's really helpful as well. And another thing that was able to, during the pandemic, help people stay in their housing was that eviction warrant term really helped, and like, made our shelter waitlist be a lot lower and a lot faster for people to be able to get into our shelters, because of how much lower that was. Yeah, I think that's some of the things for rent assistance.
So on our end, we're doing something that's rather similar to what Betsy's describing. So we're working, so to expand on what Betsy was saying, we have, this year, we also had, like, an expanded shelter network, which was really wonderful for keeping people out of, outside, essentially. So even those who were losing their housing for reasons other than financially, not being able to pay their rent on the moratorium, we were still getting them inside. So that was actually very helpful. It's, our programs, we focus on getting people into housing. So that has, through the pandemic and everything, the extra COVID funds, the landlord incentives, all of those things have been really good for getting people into housing. We've, it's actually created kind of like a housing retention atmosphere, which is a little bit different than it was before. So we have a lot of people in housing, and we're wanting to help keep them in housing, which has been, it's been good and bad. So I'm sure we'll go into that.
Thanks, Carrie. I see you have some questions from council members?
Thank you. Counselor, who was first? Counselor Hassan? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, thank you guys so much for the information. I did have a question about, you know, I know that CDBG funds, you know, from the county would go, you know, county-wide, but this, for the purposes of this discussion, are we talking about the funding that's strictly in Beaverton?
That is correct.
Okay, because I wanted to point out that Heritage Village is not in the city of Beaverton. And so I just wanted to make sure that I was tracking. I definitely think that manufactured home communities need all the help that they can get, but that particular one is not.
Yes, so we are aware of Heritage Village, and we actually do have a lot of applicants from that mobile home park. So through the weatherization assistance program, we are able to serve them as we would, if they qualify for the program. So with the city of Beaverton funds, CDBG funds that we have, that allows us to extend what we're able to do. So, you know, we're still continuing to serve Heritage Village clients, as long as they are within our income guidelines and meet eligibility. I hope that kind of answered that question.
Well, so they, they're getting Beaverton dollars, is what you're saying? Or are you saying that Beaverton dollars allow you to use your already existing pot of money to then further assist, like Heritage Village?
Not for Heritage Park. So in general, we're able to assist, as long as they live within Washington County, through our weatherization assistance funds. So funds that are coming from, like, the Department of Energy, from Portland General Electric, things like that. But we would not be using CDBG Beaverton funds in Heritage Park.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Uh huh, no problem.
Counselor Tibnan?
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for making time to be here tonight to talk with us about this. Mobile homes are very near and dear to my heart. My aunt lived in one, and I spent a lot of my youth there. And my best friend in high school grew up in one. And in both cases, one, my aunt was a single mom, living on one income, and it allowed her to live in a safe community, and she had real pride and ownership of it. And it was a really wonderful place, with a lot of memories made at it. And my best friend had a disabled mother and a father who had addiction problems, and it was a haven for her, growing up. And there are alternatives, if they had not had the ability to have that, would have been pretty dire. So I am all for preserving what we've got. I also have some questions, though, about the future of manufactured homes. I know we have all this planning happening around Cooper Mountain. Seems like we should be seriously considering some set-asides for manufactured home community out there as well. I think that one of the concerns you hear a lot about them is their lifespan, and that they're not an investment opportunity, that anything on wheels loses value over time, and that kind of gives them a bad rap. But there was something in the literature, I was reading in preparations for this, that says that the average new subsidized apartment has a useful life of 60 years, but that it's not known what the useful life is for a new manufactured mobile home. And I think that's something that we've got to figure out what that is. Because once we truly understand that, I think that it makes it a lot easier to make the case for investment in them. So that's just a comment that I've got. I'd love to know how we get to an answer on that one, both for the new ones and also for the current existing stock that we've got. So a couple of questions is, what does the turnover look like in mobile home inventory in Beaverton? I imagine it, people stay in place when they're in them, but I'm curious about that, and also what it looks like for prospective. And and also what it looks like for prospective tenants that want to get into one. Where do they go to learn about vacancies and availability?
Councillor, in terms of length of stay in mobile home parks, honestly, I don't, maybe Rob would know in terms of statewide, I know that there's not a lot of turnover unless really there is a a problem with the with the unit itself and it's rented, or the family was able to purchase their own home. But there's typically, there's not a lot, not a lot of turnover on those units. How to get into a mobile home unit? It's typically just like an apartment. Well, there's two different types. There are types of mobile home parks where you rent the mobile home unit. And there are those where you actually own and if there's a space available, you bring it in and you rent the space. And so depending as to what is available in the city and when I was doing the research in the paperwork for this, there was one park, I think it was the family type park, they had three spaces available. So when you went, when I went into that, that specifically, the specific park, that's what it told me to call the manager and to begin that process. Rob, do you have any statistics in terms of turnover?
Thanks Javier and council member. You know, I would refer you to a report that Andre Tremelay recently did in Washington County. And and she actually did a presentation to the planning commission on May fourth, you go back and watch that, but her report is quite good. It includes all of the manufactured home parks in the county. And it identifies their locations and number of spaces and so forth. And these range from modern manufactured home parks with newer homes to, you know, the typical trailer park, if you will, you know, that that has been stigmatized so over the years. A modern manufactured home park is nothing, or home is nothing like the old trailers that we've all seen. They're built in factories in a controlled environment and they're built right alongside sometimes modular homes, which, you know, the industry is widely accepted, so. So so the quality is there and there's no question that the industry is going to move towards more and more factory-built homes or at least components that can be built in a controlled environment. It's cheaper, it's more efficient. And it's more energy efficient as well, takes care of resources better. Javier is right about the the way the parks work. It's mostly typical that the resident owns their home. And they rent the lot space. But there are some where the the park owner has a home that they've rented out. Sometimes the homeowners abandon their homes or they're economically displaced. They can't move them, they're too old in many cases, so it's tragic, but they end up losing their investment and the equity that they have there. So it's a, it could be quite a predatory industry at large. But there's a lot of work going on here in the state to try to protect the residents and and protect existing manufactured home parks through zoning changes and and other other things like that. And I think you mentioned building new parks. And just for historic perspective, there hasn't been a new park built in decades in Oregon, but there are several currently in planning stages and a few being built in Southern Oregon in response to the wildfires a few years, so.
Well, that's that's really good to hear. And I I don't want to belabor this because I'm sure others have questions or knew we might have more to share, but seismic safety is another one. This is education I need to do for myself, but I think something else is we're messaging this to other electors, to our community around it, that's I know something that would come up. But I I would just say I've been doing some research on post-World War II when we had such a severe housing shortage occur as soldiers were coming back home. And one of the short-term measures that was taken was trailers. I think it was Spartan trailers in the South and they sold a lot of them all across the country for families to both to to live in safely and they were very well-built, but they could travel to where the work was. And a lot of kids grew up in those trailers and obviously things change over time and a lot of housing got built in a very short amount of time, but it was a great stopgap measure. And we definitely find ourselves with what sixty thousand housing units in short. So I think we need to start getting really creative in the short term, especially given the cost differences between this and 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 traditionally built homes, so. Thank you, and I will go back and watch that May fourth planning commission meeting, so thanks for pointing me to that.
Councillor Mitchell?
Councillor Tivnan, I just wanted to let you know, I was a manufactured home park manager for three years. And so the useful life of a typical and new manufactured home is about twenty-five years. And that's why it's really hard to find lending on it. Conventional lending is really tough to come by because you're usually looking at a thirty-year mortgage. Well, they won't do that because you know, that useful life is shorter than that, so it's exciting to know that people are out there trying to help. You know, help people maintain what it is they have, because while the turnover isn't as high as the apartment world is, I was a property manager there as well. You have a lot of housing instability, you have a lot of couch surfing, you have people who live in really tough conditions. And so I think it's great that we have some energy going that way.
Thank you. I want to move us along. You all had all great thoughts, but kind of similar to what y'all are all talking.
I'm sorry, we have one more council question. Thank you councillor Hassan.
This might not be a question for for this group, but I'll put it out there and please tell me to bring this back later if appropriate. You mentioned a little bit about like some of the communities that you're working with. I was curious about like family size in terms of what you're seeing. And then when we talk about mobile manufactured housing communities, like our immigrant communities, like is that something that works for those communities? And I, just for context, like daughter of immigrant parents, work with a lot of immigrant communities and have seen different styles of living that are more, not necessarily multi-generational, but just like more community-driven. And so again, if this isn't the right place for the question, happy to insert it later.
I think I can speak just a little bit to what we see when our in our fields of work. We do see a lot of more of the mobile homes being occupied by, I want to say, single individuals that are, you know, that they're living in there. We also see a lot of the multi-generational families as well as families that are living in mobile home parks where you have, they're living in a different mobile home. But maybe you have like the mom and the the daughter and her kids and another one. I feel like a lot of single parents are also residing in those mobile homes.
Thanks Lily.
Thank you.
Thanks for those questions. I want to move along because y'all have the experts and I want, I want them to share more. So I'm gonna bring these two questions together. I want to know what barriers and challenges you as a partner in the community are experiencing when supporting some of the community members. And thinking big picture and ideas like what could be really good strategies or programs or policies that could really help in in supporting these challenges. I kind of want to hear from y'all's perspective what that looks like. Don't jump all at once.
I can go. So for rent assistance, like a thing that we're noticing is like the rent is increasing a lot. And it seems like, especially with the people that we're providing, with people in households, like both individuals and like as a household. But it is increasing faster than like income is increasing. And like, so a lot of people realize like, oh, I can't afford it here and then they'll go and try to find somewhere else. But all of the rents around have also increased. And in order to move into a new place, like a lot of places require you make like two and a half or three times the amount of rent already to like prove that you're able to pay it. And it's really hard to find a place that they can't afford. And like even if they accept the application without the household being able to make that much more, then it's like in stable housing. I think it was mentioned earlier about rent burden, like is if it's more than a third of your household income is going towards rent, then your rent burden. And that's definitely affecting a lot of people in Washington County. Yeah, being able to find a new place to move into that's affordable and or not being able to find it and losing like items, having to double up. And then if you are able to find a place, also the moving, like deposit fee, moving fee, first month's rent. Like all that adds up to like a really huge fee just to like move into a new place. And then also the affordable housing, there's not a lot of it for people to be able to move into and they have to be on long waiting lists in order to even access it. There's a lot of like unexpected things that can cause somebody to not be able to make rent and just lose their housing. Which on top of all of the previous things I mentioned about being able to, not being able to find a new place, like that's a really hard thing to deal with. There's yeah, things that from rent assistance seem like they would help. When we're able to partner with like agencies for outreach. We also like during the pandemic, we had landlords that would like send out information about how to find rent assistance so that their tenants wouldn't like lose their housing just because they couldn't pay for a month or two. So that was really helpful for us. We've also partnered with Oregon Law Center for the outreach so that tenants have more information. And like, like on a bigger scale, we think more Section Eight vouchers and affordable housing units would be really helpful. Like a continued eviction moratorium, like even if it's just for households that are like very low income would be very helpful. And like even if you limit it to like, if they have someone in their household that's a minor or a senior would help at least with like those specific households that are like higher need. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely want to agree with the lack of affordable housing. Through the pandemic, we've been, we've received more money to help people get and stay in housing. Which is lucky because a lot of rent assistance programs have requirements of being under FMR. And a lot of the rentals that are available these days are above FMR. So we have a lot of people fighting for units that aren't available or that have really long waitlists, like Betsy was talking about. It's not it's not there isn't a lot of opportunity out there. So we do find a lot of families having multiple, multi, multi-generational compositions. And a lot of people doubling up together, like Betsy was saying, you have to kind of choose what you're gonna like, I don't know, there's, I can't even think of an example right now, but we were helping people in a variety of scenarios that like they I don't know, they they, if they, if you lose an affordable unit, you do not have another one waiting for you. And it takes time and you, some people will choose to be homeless. I mean, not really choose, they're forced into homelessness during this time. It's a huge transition period. A lot of people have children, families. It's, it's very uncomfortable.
On my end of things, some of the barriers that we are seeing is definitely the access to funding. So although, you know, through our program, we're able to do weatherization, we're very limited to the amount of rehabilitation work that we can do in a home or repair. And that's when we kind of find ourselves seeking for these community partners such as jurisdictions like the city of Beaverton that are able to extend that for us. So always seeking for new funding opportunities, I think it's very important to continue to educate and seek out these partners to kind of collaborate and then really learn about each other. And what it is that we're doing and how we can work together to extend those services for our communities. I think education is a big part on either the homeowner or the tenant, right? To really understand how their home functions and how they can, you know, prevent things from from getting worse in their home to where now they're not able to really afford a repair that could have been prevented maybe by, you know, giving a little bit of maintenance. Although with that, we do see a challenge of both physical and mental health issues, right? Sometimes we have disabled household members that are unable, just physically unable to do anything to the home. So again, having the funds available for us to be able to go in and do it, it's essential for these communities to thrive and then continue to stay in their home. Another thing that we find as well is that a lot of our clients aren't aware of the services that are out there for them. Or they're feeling distressed of the, the grants are available or distrust in the government. Or they just are embarrassed to ask for help, right? So providing the space for community members to learn about our programs. And really being open to being recipients of those funds that maybe they have contributed towards. Really, education is a big piece for us in the work that we do.
Thanks Lily. Rob, do you want to share anything?
Yeah, and and I just want to kind of repeat two things I heard from the other panelists here. The lack of affordable housing supply makes preservation of what we do have critical. If we keep investing in new housing, but we lose ground every time we lose another property. You know, we're gonna just have a zero-sum game here and we can't ever catch up, so it's critical. The other thing was collaboration and the power of that and the reason that the preservation initiative that's been going now for fifteen years has been so effective is because it pulled together all these different stakeholders. The federal government, the state housing agency, some local city agencies all participated and we brought in philanthropy to help. And so so far that initiative has preserved a little over three hundred properties, three hundred and fifty, something like that. And sixteen thousand total units, so there's a policy response that can be responsive to these kinds of challenges as long as there's collaboration, you know, between those stakeholders. The the growing challenge that we're facing right now is we've had a good response to many of the expiring affordable housing contracts that have been out there. But we're seeing now are the thirty-year long-term housing tax credit projects starting to mature. And unfortunately, when those mature, there are no protections at all for the residents. Unlike some other types of housing, they come in with vouchers to protect those residents. Right now, the residents are just going to be converted to market rate rentals and have to absorb those. And I fear that many of these residents will be economically displaced as a result. So we are working on a statewide and a federal response, but that's, that's, that is really challenging and very slow. There is one property in in Beaverton that I will point out, it's called Below Woods. Joni Hartman was going to join us tonight, but wasn't able to, but that property was an expired tax credit property in Beaverton, sixty-four units, two and three bedrooms, so it's housing families. And it was purchased by Bridge Housing. And they intend to preserve it. They'll be applying under the open Oregon Housing Community Services Preservation NOFAS to try to get the resources to preserve that permanently.
Thanks Rob, thanks to the panelist.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks to the panelist. Should I pass it on over to council members?
Uh yeah, we have one uh question from Counselor Hassan in the chat should like answered.
I I was just looking at the agenda bill. So one of the questions was how to ensure fair housing education opportunities are provided to BIPOC and marginalized communities. If you guys want to share like a quick answer to that, I'd love to hear it.
I think it's uh what was mentioned earlier, and this is something that we are working on and and. Need to go continue to work on that collaboration is about education outreach and ensuring that uh those resources are known. For uh every community that these are accessible and be very focused in uh strategic in that outreach for that purpose.
There are also uh rent well classes. Um Community Action used to hold these, but they are they have been on hold through the pandemic. But I know that um Transitions Projects is still doing virtual uh rent well classes, and I believe um. They do free classes for a certain income bracket. I believe it's low income can do it for free. So that's definitely a good resource.
Awesome. Well, thank you for joining us tonight in our third Housing Talk series. It was great. Um any final thoughts before we move to our next agenda item?
I just wanted to point out that as you can hear in terms of preservation and uh trying to avoid displacement, it it looks in many different ways. One from looking at the building, preserve the building itself, the other in looking at households. And all of it has an impact and um there's different strategies to go about it. So that was the 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 goal of this presentation to kind of give you that variety. And definitely we will be coming back with um different types of strategies and and policy discussions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um I'm gonna move up our action items since we have people waiting for it. We'll do that ahead of the public hearing. Uh so Agenda Bill two two one four six, uh the fiscal year twenty twenty three twenty or twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Social Service Funding Committee recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Uh my name is Megan Cohen. I am the Program Administrator for the Community Services Program and the Staff Liaison for the Social Service Funding Committee. I'm joined here this evening by two of the hardest working, uh most passionate and most uh incredible uh committee members we have. Um Weiwei Liu and Chair of uh the Social Service Funding Committee, Lisa Stiller. Um they are here this evening to share with you um recommendations for the twenty uh twenty two, twenty three fiscal year of social service funding. And also to just give a little uh context about the process um of making that decision this year and some other things they learned along the way. So I'm gonna pass it over to them uh to share um and I'll turn it over to Weiwei. Okay.
Good evening. Good seeing you, Laura. Um I I'd like to talk to you of just very briefly how the funding process was uh conducted or completed. Um in February, the application is available for people to apply. And then um Megan also hosted an optional sort of information session. To the nonprofit organizations that do apply. And then in March, the applications are due, so we collect them. And then um April and May, we get to work, right? We uh spend hours reading each application and scored them. And then um we get together, she feeds us, um to do the deliberations. So we discuss, we talk in this room, and then uh we reach a decision, right? And then this is now June. Um we are here to make a recommendation to the city council. Um for the the funding funded organizations that we have um. We have decided on, right? Oh, by the way, in April and May, we also interviewed the new organizations or the question, the the organizations that we have questions for. So yes, many hours of discussing uh discussing and also questioning and all of that. Um I also like to mention that um all of the funding decisions. Were made based on the city council funding priorities. There are three of them at this point. Um homelessness slash housing issues and affordable after school educational programming and health, right? The one thing I want to mention is that um. We probably needed to update some of these priorities because. We have found there are some gaps that we're not quite meeting. For instance, the immigrants and refugees, you know, in line with the council's goal on welcoming. And also, I'm so honored to hear your um your decision today. Um as an immigrant, I'm excited about that. So hopefully, we can review all of the priorities together. Plus some new ones like the the needs of immigrants and refugees sometime in January. And bring those recommendations to you for you to make a decision, right? Lisa?
So our process and takeaways from twenty twenty two. And I kind of want to open just by thanking City Council for all the support that you've given us for Social Service Funding Committee. This committee has meant more to me than just about anything else I do. So it's why I really offer that thanks to all the support. So our process and takeaways from twenty twenty two is we reviewed thirty one applications. We interviewed fourteen organizations, which is at least twenty hours of volunteer time. Plus the time that we spend going over the Zoom grants and carefully reviewing every single application. Um we use a consensus based decision making process, um five hours of deliberation time. And I want to add that over the years, I watched this time dwindle that we have come to a place where we really learn how to work with each other. And really compromising it along. Um we spent a lot of time thinking about the size of the organization, their current funding, the impact they would have on the community. Um serving diverse communities, and we take all of this into consideration. It's important to us to build relationships with local organizations and reach out to the nonprofits in our in our network. So we Megan is wonderful about keeping those relationships going all year long. As a result, you can see the statistics up there. I'm not gonna read them all, but I will just point out the thirty one applications that we got and the twenty three that we funded. For a total recommendation, I think it's three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. S S F C recommendations, the list again is up there. Um I'm gonna point out some new ones that we funded. Family Promise for fifteen thousand. The Korean Society of Oregon for twenty thousand, New Narrative for twenty thousand, Reap for ten thousand, and Women So for eight thousand. And we're really proud of these organizations which serve some communities we have not funded in the past. Um as we try to diversify and reach out to more people in our community. So we are really, really excited about those new organizations. Successes in twenty one twenty two. I know we're really trying to look hard at organizations showing us what they've done with their money in the past and how they. You know, have they worked with what we've given them. College Possible is an incredible example. Fifty three underserved students were served. And they're being connected to college access and college success services, many of which are first gen. These most of these are first generation college applicants. They have a ninety percent acceptance rate at college. They have something like over ninety percent follow through rate in graduation. They follow these kids all the way through college and beyond. Eleven hundred households received food and hygiene supplies to prevent hunger and supplemental needs um to Saint Matthews Pantry. This pantry serves a huge, huge amount of Oregonians, Beaverton Beaverton people who are, you know, who've really been hit hard by COVID and poverty. Twenty households received mental assistance and avoided homelessness from distance change. And eighteen low income residents obtained a social security disability income with free legal assistance, probably money they would never have received. Um we have a quick anecdote. I'm gonna read it really quickly in a matter of time. But assist one of the Beaverton neighbors we served had stage three renal disease. They already received a denial by S S A. Um and him and his dogs have been living in a vehicle for a couple of years. Assist helped facilitate applying for housing for housing voucher for him for um for the Metro three hundred program. And the last day it was open and the application was accepted. A month later, he began dialysis and he's gotten into housing. We helped get his benefits approved. He is much more security housed. This is a story of the thousands of people our grants have helped. Then I'm gonna turn it back to Megan, but I just again want to thank the council for their funding and what they've done for social services. And whatever more you can do for us, we'd appreciate. And again, thank you again for your support.
Um so I just wanted to wrap up. You're gonna hear more this evening um by with the presentation from um Portland State on the nonprofit incubator uh research that they did. But I just wanted to mention that um the Social Service Funding Committee was involved in um the research process for that. Um Lisa and another one of our board members, Mike, both participated to help give insight based on what they've seen working with organizations over the years. Um and what they think might be helpful um and really helped contribute to that process. They were also able to provide data that we have from years of grant funding um uh organizations on kind of size of budgets. Number of organizations, the types of activities they do and do outreach for the survey and some of the outreach um that they did to complete that work as well. So um these folks really uh helped get involved in that process. And I think just shows an interest in um continuing to support organizations, having seen them at all different levels of kind of where they're entering. When they come in for this grant funding. A couple of things that they wanted to share with you about uh kind of moving forward with the nonprofit incubator. Um was encouraging um a focus on social service organizations uh serving low income residents and immigrants and refugees. Again, kind of mentioning some of those gaps and some of the focus of the committee itself. Um helping to provide some of that funding, knowing that a lot of these organizations don't have the startup funds that they need to be able to focus on capacity building. And then some ongoing partnership with the S S F C. Um and one uh that there was a lot of one organization, there is a lot of conversation about um was Growing Together Farms. Um we just thought that this was an example of an organization that wasn't ready yet for grant funding. But would be an example of an organization um that could be served by something like an incubator. Uh who really needs that additional um uh help with fundraising, grant writing, um business support. Just forming um kind of that original strategic plan um and starting to get resources together. So then they're able to come in and to be able to present um a stronger case for a grant moving forward. Um the great thing about this grant and this committee is that they really look at applications, not just based on. Is this the the most beautifully written application ever, but what are the needs that it is serving? Um and what gaps is it filling? And uh that helps make this really accessible to organizations um with all sizes of budgets. Um and so just thinking about how that works with the nonprofit incubator moving forward, they're happy to be involved um and participate. So with that, um I will close and we're happy to take any questions or comments on the recommendation this evening. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Megan. I'm gonna start tonight with just uh thanking you guys for this hard work. I know when I met with you guys when you were starting to deliberate, I just encouraged you to be bold. And to make hard decisions because while this is a large amount of money, it is not a large amount of money for what we're asking our community to do. Um just looking at this list, I mean, it is astonishing. You're doing after school care, care for adults with disabilities. Uh meals for seniors, um you know, removing barriers, food banks, going to college. Uh lots of mental health services, women empowerment groups. I mean, this is the Beaverton community that I see in all of these grants. I know having been on the city council and approving this for years, working for an organization that has received this. And had to have the onsite uh inspection when Lisa Stiller came out and looked at everything that we were doing. I know that you guys are doing from uh start to finish. I do want to invite you back in January, so Megan can help with that. Um and really need to tell us what we're missing. Those goals that we set for this, I mean, what did we do that, guys, six years ago? Yeah, we set those goals quite a bit a long time ago, so I do think it's time for a refresh. But I also don't think you need rigid goals. You need to be empowered to give this money to the community. So I won't, I don't want to pigeonhole you into certain areas. Um but if you need some guiding principles, come back and tell us what you need. We're really happy to do that. So thank you for your hard work with that, Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you for your hard work. I know and for some of the counselors who don't know, when you get the information and you know, back then it was a binder. I'm sure we have a lot of electronic. It is, it's huge. It is almost the same as the budget information that we get. And you're looking through audits and you're looking through financials, you're reading mission statements, I mean, all these things that are so time consuming. But it is, let me tell you, the best deliberations I've ever taken part in because everybody is so passionate and engaged. And so just thank you so much for everything. Um I had a quick question. We talked a lot when I was on um the committee about. You know, trying to marry different services that didn't know about each other. Have you seen any great mergers come out of that um over the years?
Yeah, I'm thinking about that. I know we had um usually in kind of the entry stages stages as people are coming. Um to to talk about their proposals before they submit. I've had a couple of conversations with organizations deciding whether they come together um to um. To be able to uh present kind of one uh grant or do two separate ones. Um I think actually one of uh just one of the interesting examples, it's um it's a little bit harder without the in person interviews. Because people used to like sit there and wait and then they would make these really cool connections between each other. So I'm looking forward to when we have that again. Um but just one of the kind of interesting examples I was thinking of, speaking of Growing Together Farms. Um they actually have sort of a mentorship with Waste Not Food Taxi. Um and so those organizations, we had a kind of a when we went to interview, we interviewed them together. Um to be able to kind of bring in that mentor role um into that interview. Um and then talked about how we would kind of fund that moving forward. Um and so there's there's some of that going on and we'd love to see more of it. Um I think bringing people together in some of those spaces would be really helpful for that. And um also thinking about just the collaborative nature of the nonprofit incubator, if there's ways to do some of that there as well would be great.
I think another answer to that question is one thing we ask organizations is where, you know, where do you get your support from and what, you know, who supports you, who funds you? And we look at just the different ways, different organizations. A lot of the organizations have the same pots or use the same resources. So we see a lot of cross pollination of among them and we really try to encourage that.
Great. Well, thank you all so much.
Counselor Tivlin.
Yeah, thank you. I uh I spent some time nowhere near as large uh pool of applicants. But uh on the Grants Committee for the Arts Commission and remember how hard it was. Um not only to make sure that you're thoroughly educating yourself on each um application, but choosing. Because you can't choose them all and then some sometimes you really wish you could. Um I I love that you're tracking and 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 setting the expectation that they have to report back on what they did with the funding. Because I think um one of the things I noticed is that the longer like you you're successful in getting that first grant, you do great things with it. You go again, you get it again, you do great things. Enough time passes. The initial fire can sometimes lower a little bit, the pilot light goes out and they start kind of phoning in the applications. Or or the just the results don't quite seem like they're used to. Or it could be that they just don't realize money has gotten tighter. There's a lot of need out there. The competition is more fierce. And they they're just caught unprepared and they didn't, they, you know. So I think that that's that's one thing um I'd love to see across all the grants that the city gives. Is that there's just this very loud flashing sign to to folks that get awarded it. You're gonna have to really show how you use the money. You know, the next time around that that that's incorporated into the decision making. But I I'm just so appreciative of the work that the committee did to to do all of this and in such a short amount of time too. So thank you so much for your contributions.
Counselor Hartmeyer, break.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you all for spending time with us this evening. I know you had to wait a while to get to your presentation, but please know it was worth the wait from my perspective. And I will second Mayor Beatty's um comments about coming to us and telling us like you can help guide us here, right? That those those the strategic goals that are set for that committee, we want you to help form them. Um and then thank you for bringing it up. And then thank you for bringing up the, the kind of the example of an opportunity that might be a good fit for incubator, for the nonprofit incubator. And I think it just kind of shows like that need is out there and you've seen a firsthand example. So thank you for bringing that up as well.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes, I won't over-echo what everyone has said, but I will for 30 seconds. Lisa, Weiwei, Megan, this is like the work. I think when I think about racial equity and like how we really make a difference for some of our communities, these are the organizations that are doing that work. I think this is the fraction of the funding that we need to give them to really actually move the kind of change we want to see in Beaverton. And so I look forward to our council continuing to find ways to invest in this. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Let's take a five-minute recess before we get into some of the heavier items. ... adjourned us ahead of time. So if we could vote on that, that would be awesome.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, I will move that the city council approve Agenda Bill 22146, the fiscal year 2022-23 Social Services Funding Committee Recommendation.
Second.
I'm sorry, Counselor Mitchell beat y'all. It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Mitchell. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Will the recorder call a roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg? Yes. Counselor Hassan? Yes. Counselor Mitchell? Yes. Counselor Tivnan? Yes. Counselor Sansucci?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the resolution adopting updated permit fee schedules for the building, planning, and site divisions pursuant to Beaverton Code BC 8.02.040, Beaverton Development Code 10.55, and BC 9.05.032, and repealing resolution numbers 3583, 3681, 4685, 4705, and 4758. Before we begin, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. To call in, you would dial 669-254-5252. You'll be asked to enter tonight's meeting ID number, which is 1605678907, followed by the pound sign. Then a participant ID number, which is 060722, again, followed by the pound sign. Once you've joined the meeting, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you are, have joined this meeting online already, you can let the city recorder know that you wish to speak by clicking on the raise hand feature. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record. After each person speaks, council members may ask questions of the speaker. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
There is, Mayor. I am sharing my screen. Is the council able to see that screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Beatty and counselors. My name is Anis Latinsky. I'm the Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. I will be delivering the presentation today, but I am joined by the building official, the site development manager, and the, gosh, assistant planning, excuse me, assistant finance director, although Susan Cole I know is, is pinch-hitting for, for finance in general. But we are here to answer any questions. I will phone a friend if necessary. So we're here for a public hearing and counsel consideration of proposed fee updates for the development permitting process in Beaverton. Before we get started, a couple of quasi-housekeeping items. I want to note that an updated exhibit C to the resolution was circulated yesterday. This corrects an error in that exhibit and the script for tonight is updated and has been updated by the city attorney to ensure that any motion includes the correct exhibits. Also, as of about five o'clock today, I'm aware of one comment letter that had been received from the Oregon Home Builders Association. The letter expressed a general support for the proposal, but did express some concerns about one specific fee. I just want to let you know that I will address this as part of my presentation tonight. So at a work session on April 19th this year, staff presented an analysis that was conducted over the past year or so and presented a framework for fee updates. With council's support, we developed a detailed proposal, which is here for your consideration this evening. To briefly recap, the goals that are the foundation of this proposal include applying sound fiscal policy for fees in the development process, maintaining high service levels, establishing an annual inflation update to ensure that, that the fees do keep place, keep pace with costs and reduce the potential for big dumps in fees that would be needed in the future. And also to be mindful of equity and be ready to adjust fees in the future based on citywide consolidation of, of an equity approach to fees. The, the overall proposal, I'm just going to go ahead and dive in, go over it in a, in a general way and then talk in a bit more detail about the planning fees since those represent some more complex updates and also the, the largest change in the fee rates among the different divisions. That inflation adjustment that is proposed is, is proposed to be linked to the consumer price index for the West Coast for significant urban areas. There's a longer title there that is in the Agenda Bill and in the resolution, but there is a specific index that's proposed to be applied in consultation with finance. The proposal is to apply that actually annually in February because that aligns with some other fee or fees that the city does. And that annual update would not apply to fees that are already proportional to project value because those fees already inherently reflect inflation. An update to the technology fee is proposed. This was established in 2020 in order to help fund technology upgrades such as the new electronic permitting system that is being implemented. Staff proposed to increase this fee to 5%. Tree planting fees are proposed to be increased. The city street, street tree planting program was established in 1997 and the fee has not increased since then. This is a program where the city essentially plants trees for a developer when certain kinds of subdivisions are created. And the same program also allows the city to plant fees as mitigation for tree removal under certain circumstances. On the case of street trees, the city will maintain those for a number of years, including watering for the other trees. The cost is simply to purchase and then plant the tree. So the proposed fee for that is, is lower. Site development fees are now proposed to increase. However, there is one exception to that, which is the fee related to stop work order, which is proposed to increase to $500. And there are some clarifications for fees related to, to erosion control as well. And building fees are proposed to increase 15.5%. This is to ensure that the building divisions fund is sustainable. It is required by state law to operate independently from the general fund. And in the past, there have, that there has been the need to supplement the building fund from the general fund. And so this fee increase is proposed to ensure that the building fund is more sustainable going into the future. For planning, the analysis that staff conducted found that planning's current cost recovery is at approximately 28% over the last four years and the fees for planning are proposed to increase in order to target a cost recovery of 75%. And so I will go through that planning fee proposal in some additional detail. One of the, one of the significant changes we're proposing is introduction of some proportional fees. The reality is that different development projects have sometimes very different, very different levels of complexity and size, but our fee structure was not previously calibrated in order to charge more for those projects which are larger and more complex. It is common in the region for there to be proportional fees in relationship to project value for certain types of design review applications. And the proposal to institute proportional fees for design review applications that are more complex is based on, based on that assessment. The proposal is to charge 1.25% of project value, doesn't include land costs, with some minimum and maximum fee amounts. The details are all in the Agenda Bill, but I can also show them on screen if council would like to review those during, during the conversation tonight. In addition, land divisions, which already had a per-lot fee, are proposed to have that, that, that per-lot fee adjusted to make it tiered. So if there are fewer lots, then the per-lot fee will be a little bit higher. Larger numbers of lots will move into different tranches where the per-lot fee will go down according to that number. And then finally, a new proportional aspect to the planned unit development, looking at as a PUD fee, will, will, is proposed, which reflects the size. So a minimum size for a PUD is actually two acres. And the proposal is to add an additional $500 per acre. Once you get over two acres, the way that would work is that we would round down. So if you're over two, if you're 2.5 acres or above, you'd, you'd, you'd pay that additional $500. And then each full acre above that, again rounding up or down from above or below 0.5, the fee would be increased on that acre basis. In addition to that, I found in my survey of other jurisdictions fees that some jurisdictions provide for discounts when multiple land use applications are needed in order to facilitate a single project. Eugene and Bend both take this approach. So the proposal to allow discounts would charge 100% of the highest fee to facilitate a particular project. And additional land use applications would incur 75% of the fees for those other applications. This recognizes that more applications are more work for staff, but there is a certain economy scale associated with bundling those applications together when they're processed concurrently. I also want to mention the Housing Options Project. This is on the agenda for council to hold a public hearing and consider adoption on June 21st. So that's after this meeting, obviously. But we wanted to try to reduce the complexity of different fees that would need to be adopted as a result of new land use applications that are proposed with the Housing Options Project and also need to remove fees from the fee schedule for land use applications that are proposed to be eliminated. So the way that we are approaching it is that we have included an exhibit to the resolution, Exhibit D, that includes the Housing Options Project fees. But that particular exhibit will only take effect if council approves the HOP project on the 21st. So if council does not take action on the 21st, only the fees for the non-Housing Option Project Exhibit, which is Exhibit B, would take effect. If council does approve the HOP proposals on the 21st, then the exhibit that is inclusive of the Housing Options Project fees would take effect. I do now want to address the application that was the subject of the Home Builders Association letter. And this is really addressing the, one of the new applications that is proposed to be created with the Housing Options Project. However, it does respond to actually a different mandate from the state legislature. The middle housing expedited land division, it's a type of land division established under state law that includes some, basically the ability to approve that land division without complying with the same standards that would be in place for a typical land division. And these include requirements for parking, for access, lot dimension requirements would be waived, street funded requirements would be waived for these applications. In addition, the state required that these applications be processed via an expedited process. And rather than reinventing the wheel, they simply applied an existing expedited land division schedule to the new middle housing expedited land division application. And what this does is it requires a jurisdiction to make a decision in about half the time as would normally be required under Oregon law. The expedited land division application, not the middle housing version, but the original version, actually dates back to 1995. I don't know the circumstances under which it was adopted, but it's been on the books since then. In my time in Beaverton since 2016, there have been no expedited land division applications processed, nor have there been in the memory of any of the other planners working for the organization. My understanding that generally, other jurisdictions also, there are few of any applications under that expedited land division process. However, because the, the shortened timeframe is consistent between these two, two applications, the middle housing land division, expedited land division, and the original expedited land division, for the purposes of determining fees, I took a very simple approach of applying the same fee for expedited, of middle housing expedited land divisions as, as is proposed for the old-school expedited land division. This is a relatively high fee, $24,000 is the proposed fee, which is consistent with the magnitude of the increases across the fees for, for the planning fee schedule. However, I do understand that council potentially would want to consider whether a lower fee would be appropriate. If that is true, staff would consider a fee of $12,000, which is consistent with a different land division application, the partition application. In addition, staff proposes that that fee be revisited in a year to evaluate whether we have any experience actually processing the application that could inform an adjustment of that fee in one direction or another in order to reflect the actual time and effort needed to process that fee. I, I do just want to touch on the methodology that I used in order to identify that planning fee increases to implement that targeted 75% cost recovery. And, you know, the reality is that we don't have a, a timekeeping system right now at the city that tracks the exact amount of time spent on specific projects or land use applications. So it wasn't possible to take a fine-grained approach that would, where we could look and say, this is how many hours it takes to process a specific application. So our methodology for assessing cost recovery was really quite simple. We looked at the fee revenue that came in, we looked at the, the staff costs of operating the, operating the permitting process, and we compared those over four years. That gave us the cost recovery estimates. So the approach to identifying the increased fees was equally simple. Rather than create a sense of false precision, I made an estimate for, for what the, what the new proportional fees could potentially represent. And I increased the remainder of the fees that were not proportional by a consistent percentage and then I rounded to make them, again, make them kind of simple numbers. I felt that it was probably inappropriate to go into pennies at that point. But this is a part of the background in terms of why this particular fee is at the level that it's proposed to be. And also the, I want to be transparent about the, the simplicity of the approach to determining this fee proposal. I want to note that there was notice provided of this proposal to the Oregon State Building Code Division as required by law. In addition, development customers, we maintain a applicant's email list. These folks were informed via email prior to the council work session and then also prior to this hearing, along with being provided information about the details of the proposal. And with that, the staff recommendation is that city council votes to approve the proposed development fee update. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Awesome. Thank you. I have a couple of questions to start this evening. Would our new Blue Beam software not be tracking how long it takes to move through application processes? processes?
So Blue Beam, so Blue Beam is basically a, a PDF collaboration tool that we use currently in order to review electronic applications that are submitted online. The electronic permitting system, while it will include the Blue Beam, is, is a much more complex system that's designed for, for tracking permit fees. However, the time tracking of individual staff time was not part of the, of the scope of this project. And so it will not be implemented through the EPS project. I don't know whether the system that we are building out now has the capacity to support that kind of time tracking, but even if it did, it would be beyond the current scope of our work.
Okay. I do think that when I reviewed the list of fees, I'm, I think 99%, I agree. I think we're within norm of everyone around us. I do think the observant fee of $24,000 for middle housing one, just, it sets it apart from everything else. And so for me, if we're trying to encourage middle housing, if we're trying to do the workaround code, if we're trying to make it as accessible as possible, that is a huge fee for us to attach to it. And so, you know, I want to hear what the rest of council says, but I would be in support of us lowering the fee for this year. I mean, just because we've had none in the past, we just spent the last year talking about middle housing code and rewriting it to make it affordable or accessible. And so I'd hate to spend all of that time where we talked about trying to bring different kinds of housing and then put a fee on it so hard that it kind of does the opposite of what we intended the code to do. So, Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anna, for the presentation. I echo the mayor's sentiments on this. I think I'm a little bit concerned because it is such a large number. You know, $24,000 is a lot of money, and this is the first time we're really talking about this particular set of fees around the middle housing and the Housing Options Project. Throughout all of our Housing Options Project feedback, we've been giving guidance that we want to be as flexible as possible to encourage as many types of housing be built, and especially wanting to encourage middle housing being developed in our city. And so I'm pretty worried about a $24,000 fee being a deterrent to that development. So I really like the idea of the alternative of the $12,000 fee as, you know, as a, and giving that one-year review, right? Was that appropriate? Did that get to the kind of cost recovery that we're kind of aiming for with all of our other fees and just not knowing exactly how long they'll take? You know, that would be my, my preference is that we move to the $12,000 fee and reserve the ability to review it at one year.
Councillor Mitchell?
Yeah, thanks for that information. I've spent about 15 years in the world of development, and I think that 24,000, you know, that fee is, is reasonable. But my question is, for the smaller developers, could we perhaps, based upon, you know, looking at their financials, should they want to show them, and they want to demonstrate a need, could we then, you know, have a sliding scale at that point? So we don't really discourage, but we're not just handing money away. Because I know there are a lot of developers who that, you know, even middle housing, and I've worked in low-income housing, like I said, manufactured home housing, I mean, all these different things that, and there's money to be, to be distributed, especially in situations like this. But, you know, thinking about different tools to use, is that something that could be implemented in a fair way?
So taking a sliding scale approach is not something that was included in this particular evaluation. It would, it would be more complex than the fee approach that we're taking at this point. And, you know, I, I think that that would be, there would probably be, I can imagine some interesting conversations around what we identified as what that scale would be and how it would slide. I, I think that it would probably take some pretty careful consideration. It's not something that I, that I certainly am, am able to really opine on or propose right now. There would have to be a separate effort to, to explore that.
Yeah, I think what I've seen about our fees over the years is they're never quite where they should be. And I feel like we don't really get where we need to be in order to be effective to really push forward our mission in the way that we could if we collected fees that, you know, were more suited to what it is that we're doing. And I think this is a great step in the right direction. I don't have any, you know, issues with the proposed fees, but should other councillors have issues, then I think we should entertain a sliding scale. And I know that's not included now, but I think that's a good tool to use. So we can still capture from those who can pay and kind of encourage those to develop when they're growing, and, and that helps everybody in the end. So, thanks.
Councillor Tibnan?
Thank you. I appreciate the Home Builders Association flagging this, because this is a lot of stuff to read through. And given that we're increasing fees almost across the board, and in some cases significantly, that this was the only thing that they called out, I think speaks volumes about that what we're doing is in line with just getting rightsized with what other cities in the tri-county area are charged to develop within their cities. So the fact that this one was flagged and with the, just the context that you gave during your presentation, I, I would support lowering it to 12 and then seeing how it goes. I also think, I mean, coming from a world of consulting where you bill every single hour of every single day, there's a lot of data that comes out of that, and you get really efficient really fast when you have it to look back on. So with all the work that's gone into this, this project, I, I'm, I'm hoping that there's a way that's an easy lift for staff to be able to log their hours so we can see where the time is really going on these. But thank you, thank you for pushing this forward, and yes, to the 12.
Councillor Hassan?
Yeah, I would also support the 12, so appreciate that. I, I think this is, Anna and staff have done an excellent job putting this together, so thank you. I support the 12,000. I do think that what Councillor Mitchell is talking about is a sliding scale. And I remember we talked about what equity looked like, and that wasn't maybe going to happen in this round. But I think in the future, in, in a future reiteration of this, that we do think about how we make this accessible to different sized developers would be important. So maybe not today, but hopefully in the future.
I'll take public comment now. I do know that we have one from the audience already, or I mean, from the Zoom room. Ryan from HBA. You'll have three minutes to address the council when you're primed and ready to go.
Hi, Mayor Beatty. Ryan McIntyre, Governor, and Ferris Director for the Home Builders of Metropolitan Portland. Thank you for your time today. Yeah, I, I appreciate staff's work on this. And as we said in my, my letter, I don't want to reiterate everything there, but, you know, we understand that Beaverton needs to update their, their fees to match current prices and, and going forward. And we appreciate the fact that they're considering indexing it. Staff suggested do that is great to prevent against larger, large, I guess, sporadic increases. Consistency is easier for us to deal with in the industry. The other thing I wanted to point out, I appreciate staff's comment on trying to come up with a number for the expedited land division. However, to just take a shorter timeframe or for the current expedited land division, they're actually two different things. The current law under SB 458 actually pulls a lot of the requirements out of that process and shortens it significantly, not just in days required to perform those tasks, but all what's required to, to approve those expedited land divisions. And so I think it's appropriate to lower, lower that. And I appreciate staff's consideration proposal to possibly lower that to 12,000. And we would encourage the council to, to support that. And we also look forward to having a discussion again in a year when you have a better data to support whatever charges are appropriate. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, Ryan, you're off the hook. Thank you for joining us this evening. Is there anyone else waiting to address the council?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam Mayor, if I could, you have already given all of the gory details on this. I'm going to move that the city council approve Resolution Number 4795 as presented in Agenda Bill 22145 with the modification that the middle housing expedited land division fee be set at $12,000 at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg. Any discussion on the motion? All right, we're ready for a vote. I'll have the recorder call the vote.
Councillor Sansusi?
Yes.
Councillor Tibnan?
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Okay. On June 12th, or on June 21st, 2022, during a regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the 2021 Beaverton School District Long Range Planning, Long Range Facility Plan and adopt minor revisions to Chapter 1 Amendment and Procedure Element
And Mayor, if I could?
Yep.
Just one, one comment I want to make. This will be coming to us for a public hearing, so there's an opportunity for, for the council and staff to consider one small modification that I would like to suggest to this. No complaints about most of it, it's fairly routine. But on page 11, under Section 5.2, there is a section here that describes the Public Facilities Plan for the city as an, as a portion of the comprehensive plan. And there are a number of plans from partner agencies and from the city listed here as bullet items. And the new one, the Beaverton School District Long Range Facility Plan for 2021, is listed here replacing an older one. We have an opportunity, I think, to ask our staff if we can add an additional bullet to this list that might be appropriate, which is the City of Beaverton Active Transportation Plan, which doesn't have to go through the Planning Commission because it already did, and it already got adopted by the city council a number of years ago. At some point, it will be folded into the Transportation System Plan, but it seems like it might be useful for us to at least incorporate it into the comprehensive plan in this list, since we have other City of Beaverton master plans in this list already. So maybe something for staff to consider during the next two weeks before our public hearing.
Is that possible, Bill? What do we do?
The ordinance should stay the way that it is, but at the meeting, when you have the public hearing, it would be similar to what we've done twice now tonight. A motion is made to adopt the ordinance, but also with the amendment that's being suggested. That would be how I would proceed so that the ordinance that's been attached here is exactly the ordinance you'll first consider at the public hearing.
Ms. Harayama, could you forward that plan to the council to make sure they understand what they would be agreeing to? I agree with Councillor President, but let's just forward it to city council.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that. Okay. We are on our, to our work session, Agenda Bill 22148, Nonprofit Incubator Project Update. And I know we have Cece with us, and you have some people with you, so go ahead and introduce them, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Carl and Greg are here from Portland State University. Thank you so much, first of all, for hanging with us for a few hours. We really appreciate that. So Carl, would you share the presentation, and we can go ahead and get started? So we are here tonight to talk about the nonprofit incubator. I'm Cece Ritter, I'm the Public Engagement Division Manager. And Greg and Carl, could you introduce yourselves, please?
Greg Greenway, Center for Public Service at Portland State.
Carl Christensen, Graduate Research Assistant for the Center for Public Service.
Thank you so much, and just wanted to thank the staff team. There is a larger group that have worked with Portland State on this project as well, Dan Weinheimer and Cheryl Tweedy, and Mike Williams and Megan Cohen. This has been a, a larger effort, and so we definitely want to thank that staff team also, and thanks to Portland State for all the research, but also the contracts and the IGA and the task orders and the finance team and all of that. It was a heavy lift. But also all the nonprofits who participated and followed along and, and participated as well. So we want to make sure to recognize them too. Okay, let's dive in. Carl, can you take us to the next slide? Thank you. Just a little bit of quick background. This project is right now about ARPA funds, $1 million from the federal and state governments. We hired the Center for Public Service at PSU to take on the research portion of this project. We talked about researching best practices, local nonprofit needs assessment, and make recommendations about first steps that we should take. Next slide, please. So we posed a lot of questions when we first scoped this project, and so here are all of the questions that we talked to PSU about, and then we really narrowed those down to those top questions that are bolded. Next slide, please. And so I'm going to turn it over to Greg to talk a little bit more, and Carl, about what did we do and what were the findings, and then recommendations at the end, and then we'll come back with some questions for you as, as a council.
Yeah, thanks, Cece. So I'm Greg Greenway, Senior Fellow at Portland State University's Center for Public Service. I'm the project manager on this report. I do want to acknowledge, as Cece said, there's a bigger team here. We worked with a number of folk at the city, but also at PSU, Masami Nishibeha, who is our project supervisor, Ronnie Kano, another senior fellow who advised on the project, Carl Christensen, who you're going to hear from soon, and Cameron Simmons, who was another grad student who did a lot of the work. Between Carl and Cameron, they did most of the, the research. I want to start just by saying how much we appreciate this work with the city. The Center for Public Service is always looking for ways to help local governments with good projects. We got this contract with the city to write a report, and our, our ultimate goal is to help you move forward in any way we can with a nonprofit incubator. If I can preview our conclusion, I would say that, kind of echo what the mayor said earlier in the meeting, be bold. What we learned is that the Beaverton Nonprofit Incubator is a very innovative concept. We didn't find any examples of exactly what you're trying to do anywhere else. It can potentially benefit the community in all kinds of ways, and we think that a lot of other cities and potentially funders would be very interested in what you're doing. I would also echo, you know, having listened to the meeting, what Lisa Stiller said from the Social Service Funding Committee, you know, who, who supports you, who funds you? This incubator is a concept to support and fund smaller nonprofits. The, the big concept that we have here is how to build capacity for nonprofit organizations in Beaverton. So what did we do? Going down the bullet points, we addressed all the questions on the last slide. We researched different business incubator models, mostly regionally in Oregon and, and California. And how could you adapt a business incubator to support nonprofit organizations in Beaverton? We think about this as kind of exploratory. We, we would have loved to go deeper into this. Our goals were to identify key questions we learned, key questions for city council, and how can we help council move forward? So what did we do? We, we looked at different types of incubators. We interviewed, and, and Carl has a slide on this, we interviewed different incubators, capacity, we would say, capacity building organizations. Some might be called incubators, some might be called something else, but different organizations. And what are the best practices? We talked to the practitioners. We talked to half a dozen, six, eight people in, in Beaverton to get a sense of the nonprofit community. We acknowledged that we didn't, everyone gave us other names to talk to, but within the scope of the project, we talked to people to help us understand the landscape and what questions we might ask in a survey. So we talked to a couple of folk on the, the Social Service Funding Committee to inform our questions, and, and, and some members of the nonprofit community. Then we surveyed the nonprofit community. We sent a survey out to 100 We sent a survey out to a hundred and forty-three organizations in Beaverton. We identified key policy questions for City Council, which we'll talk about in a bit, and we recommend certain first steps. That's the scope of what we did. I'm going to turn it over to Carl to kind of give you a summary of the conclusions, both in terms of what we learned about nonprofit incubators and what we learned from our survey. So Carl.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. As Greg mentioned, uh, this is a pretty innovative idea that Beaverton is considering. We didn't find, uh, any operating organizations, and neither did the literature have a lot about incubators specifically for nonprofit organizations. Some of the practitioners we talked to would say, oh, we'd work with a nonprofit organization, but they weren't specifically, uh, had that mission or tailoring their programs for nonprofit organizations. As we looked around, we also found many different models for building organizational capacity, and we think whatever, you know, a program is called, or an organization is called, that's really the mission, is to build the capacities to support organizations. And there's different ways to do this. There's the incubator model, there's a more focused incubator for, uh, more developed organizations called accelerators, and then there's a funding relationship, which is like the Beaverton Social Services Funding Committee. These different ways to build capacity differ on the spectrum of how hands-on they are. You know, some, there's very direct mentoring and teaching and guiding, and then some are very hands-off, here's funding, go do your work. Um, and they also support organizations at different stages. Some are at the start, they're just growing, some intervene in the middle when they just need help coming to the next step, and some capacity building happens when the program is well-developed. But in all these differences, there are some common best practices. We found that cohort models are really important, along with co-location, uh, and seed funding is a good way to help, uh, jumpstart organizations. The different, uh, benefits that accrue from this are education that organizations can learn, they can take advantage of technical support, they can take advantage of peer learning from each other, that's that cohort and co-location benefit, and then there's networking, uh, you know, sharing contacts, being connected to the wider nonprofit community. So there's really a range of possible programming, um, that, including in this cohort configuration, there's shared services, so this might be sharing accounting or human resources or IT services among different organizations. There's classes they could all take, or different training, mentoring opportunities, you know, getting introduced to the nonprofit community of Beaverton, knowing what funding resources there are, what other government agencies there are to connect with. Also supportive fundraising, that's a really important thing for growing organizations, and then helping them coordinate, uh, with events. This is a graphic we put together that just gives a sense of the scope of, um, what's out there regionally for, uh, similar incubator, uh, programs, and they, it shows, uh, where kind of these services fall, maybe which areas have some gaps of services, and where services are most heavily, um, offered. Moving on, this is about our, uh, survey to the nonprofit community that we conducted. One of the things we found was there's a wide range of services provided, but there's also a wide range of needs and communities served. The top three areas of, um, different, uh, services provided were youth support, community empowerment, and food security. We also found that there was a strong interest, uh, from the nonprofits that we surveyed in participating in an incubator program. We also found that most local organizations had very small budgets. We found that larger organizations tended to serve the greater Washington County area. So if the nonprofit was exclusively to the Beaverton City, uh, it would have a smaller budget. We also asked, uh, respondents about the biggest challenges they faced, um, and they listed financial challenges, staffing, and, uh, difficulty with business planning as some of their biggest challenges. When we asked about what they had as priorities for training or support services, they listed diversity, equity, and inclusion training, um, help learning how to fundraise more effectively, and networking is some of their biggest priorities for what a program could potentially provide. We realized, too, that this, uh, survey was just initial findings, it had a very small sample size, um, and therefore can only be seen as making suggestive, but not any definitive findings. I'm going to send it back to Greg.
Yeah, thanks, Carl. So I realize there are a lot of bullet points on here, and, uh, I'm going to just highlight a few. So when we think about questions for council, so orienting values, equity, innovation, any broad guidance that the council can give to, uh, an incubator partner is something that you might discuss. Would you include only small organizations, emerging organizations? That's kind of the, um, essence of an incubator? Or would you combine that with, um, the incubator with larger organizations, more mature organizations that, um, can, can interact with small organizations in, in a cohort, for example? Would you identify priority need areas? So for example, with the Social Service Funding Committee, you have certain, uh, priority areas. That doesn't mean necessarily you won't fund anything else, or wouldn't accept, uh, any other organizations into the incubator, but are there priorities that you would, um, highlight for the incubator? Hybrid or, uh, nonprofit-only model is, is a key question that will set the city on a, a path one way or the other. Would you work with your existing nonprofit or, or for-profit incubator OTBC, which is a, a top-level incubator for, uh, businesses, startups? Or would you partner with another organization and start a, a nonprofit-only incubator? Questions about staffing, governance, ongoing funding, et cetera, those are, 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 are other important questions that the city could think about as you move forward. Next slide. So our recommendations, again, lots of bullet points, I'm going to highlight a few. So, um, we think it makes sense to invest in general office with, uh, workspace, conference rooms, private rooms, um, and, uh, a large event space would be ideal. Um, the reason this is important is that if you were to focus on a particular sector, let's just say, for example, food, um, you might invest initially in, uh, kitchen space, uh, warehouse space. Your initial investment could be determined by the initial priorities that you set within the community. It seems to us that it would make sense to invest more generally into broad, good office space to serve a, a, a wide range of different nonprofits. We say focus on emerging organizations with a clear mission, meaning small organizations, but those that are ready to take advantage of the incubator. Identify priority needs makes sense, as you do with the Social Service Funding Committee, but also leave that open to, uh, a, a variety of organizations that might serve those needs. Importantly, um, there are two ways that the incubator can serve nonprofits, that it, you can have a cohort, a resident cohort, so a handful of organizations that, that are co-located in the incubator for, say, a year. And, uh, the other way is to have wider programming for, for the community. You can have classes and events and, and, uh, perhaps fee-for-service, um, for organizations outside of that cohort. We recommend doing both. Have a cohort, that's the essence of an incubator, that's in residence for a certain period of time, and then also have classes and programming, workshops, services, et cetera, to be determined for the wider nonprofit community. Highlighting some of these, um, important to have a city staff liaison, somebody who's designated city staff to work with the incubator staff. We think in general you should leave the details about programming to the incubator, whoever your partner is, um, but it's really important to have somebody within the city who's tracking that and following up with participants and, and coordinating city funding, et cetera. Uh, we like the idea of coordinating with, uh, coordinating funding with participation. So the, 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 the body that, that provides funding right now for the city is the Social Service Funding Committee, uh, connect that, or at least coordinate that with participation in the incubator. And then our, our final, um, recommendation is do more research. We did what we could, but, uh, everyone we talked to told us to talk to somebody else. We know that there is, uh, large universe of nonprofits, both small and local, and larger and regional, that work in Beaverton, and we suggest that you involve them in the future development of this program, something like a working committee, or a, you know, working group, a committee, however it's structured, um, to help, uh, move this process forward from initial investment to ultimate implementation and development over time.
Thanks so much, Greg. Thanks so much, Carl. Uh, so we put together some key questions for, uh, key policy questions, along with Jenny's, um, guidance on maybe where we could start with conversation, but of course, wherever you would like to begin, um, and whichever one, uh, speaks to you first that you want to, to talk more about, but, um, establishing a local partnership. We've mentioned OTBC, or would you like to go in a different direction? There's more work to do. We think it's probably a phased creation, so there's some suggestions there. And then, would you like to provide policy direction on what model or the focus?
All right, well, I'll go first, since no one's, uh, jumping in here. Thank you for the hard work on this and the report, and thank you, Cece, for being kind of our, our in-house person, champion, um, getting this going and moving through the phases. I would like to support us partnering with OTBC. I think, uh, they have such dynamo representation, they have great board members, and while this isn't exactly what they've been doing, they're, they just changed their name to be more reflective of their, like, adaptation to, to stepping up and changing during the diverse environment. So I'm excited that we have expertise in-house, and by in-house, I mean in conjunction with a, a contract run from the city. They have been a fantastic partner of the city, and we already heavily invest in them, and so this is a very logical partnership for me, for us to go that direction. That doesn't mean that we don't have a say in how they're operating or what they're doing, but I think they're a reasonable partner. I think, uh, I think that for us, we need to set up a partnership and ask them to bring together experts. You know, I've been having a lot of people reach out to me since we've been talking about this. I've had a ton of meetings, we've had the Congresswoman here, we had the Senator here, there's lots of local nonprofits that are very interested in this, and we have a lot of local nonprofits that are interested in acceleration, that are interested in the adjunct programming that goes along with it. I think about home plate youth services, when they started, there was one employee, now they have twenty-six, and they would see a partnership with OTBC and the nonprofit incubator. They grew up really fast and really quick, a lot due to the pandemic, but they need some help on how to move forward in this next phase. So I think we have a lot of opportunity to serve new and, and exciting nonprofits, but also incubate and accelerate ones that already exist here. Counselor Tibnan?
Thank you. Yeah, I, um, echo everything you just said. So short answer is yes, yes, and yes. And then to the second bullet, yes, yes, yes. I've gotten an opportunity to serve on several boards for nonprofits over the years, and there's similar struggles in all of them, primarily, uh, around paperwork. How do you write a good grant? How do you get people to believe in your cause? How do you get them to donate? How do you throw a good event? How do you keep people from, uh, leaving because of low wages? How do you hire? And, uh, these are not specifically things that OTBC has, uh, counseled on. However, there is so much overlap with how you run a nonprofit business with how you run a for-profit business, that I think it makes great sense to use the expertise of the existing, um, staff at OTBC, but also get some real good ringers in that can become part of the staff for the organization. So I'm, I, I love the idea of a hybrid model. Uh, as you said, this is, this is a really innovative project in and of itself, to even create something like this. Think of the innovations that could come out if we think about the best practices of both for-profit and nonprofit, and maybe they inform each other, and maybe they influence each other. So, uh, I'm very excited about it. And one last thing I'll say is that, um, with OTBC, we've got, uh, uh, representation from the council on the board. I'm serving on it currently, and so is Counselor Mark Sansusi, and that gives us an absolute bird's-eye view into everything going on, and I think that that level of, um, engagement is going to be really important for the nonprofit incubator as well.
Just an interesting thought on that is that I, I interviewed downtown, I got to be on the interview panel for the Downtown, um, Association Executive Director Search, and one of the, the people interviewing said something really interesting to me, because we were like, oh, you don't really have a business background, you come from not-for-profit, can you move this direction? And they said, the only difference between the for-profit and not-for-profit is where the excess money goes. We invest back in ourselves versus back in the pocket. So I think you have very solid points on, they're very similar. Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, so I will jump in. I actually disagree with, um, straight-up giving it to OTBC. I think that we should RFP this to see what other organizations think. I was doing a little bit of my own Googling, not a lot. MISO has worked specifically with historically excluded communities. They're a business incubator, if we choose to go with a business incubator. I know that Urban League PDX has done some incubating of businesses, so I talked to a couple of folks there. We did receive some testimony from folks at Unite Oregon, um, and I know there's an organization called Seeding Justice. So I think it'd be a disservice for us to not at least open this up to people, to put together proposals to us. I also think that what we saw with ARPA, ARPA, ARPA money, right, is intended to give back to communities who are most impacted, and oftentimes, the communities that are most harmed have the least access to us, to being in these rooms, to being in these conversations. I think as we, so I, I really would encourage us to be more open, rather than identifying an organization. I do think it's important that we think about established organizations and groups. We have really good nonprofits that are doing work, they just need help. We saw about twenty-one on a list that we funded, so how do we help them get where they need to go? I think I was really excited to see, um, what this, the presenters talked about in terms of youth support, community empowerment, and food insecurity. I will say, there was one thing in this presentation, it talked about focusing on emerging, or emerging organizations with a clear mission. You know, I think that that thinking is centered in whiteness. A lot of groups, in specifically communities of color, don't have a mission. They don't know what they want to do. They help each other, they show up. In my community, when someone, something happens, that, you don't go through a nonprofit to support them, it's, it's very mutual aid-centric. So while I think it is important to, um, focus on all types of organizations, I just think that only focusing on emerging organizations with a clear mission is, is systemic in itself, because people who are doing this work in the community don't know how to, they don't know how to have a mission. Like, that's not something that they, that comes really natural to them. So those are a couple of my initial thoughts, um, but I would love to hear from others.
Counselor President? Council President.
Yeah, thanks, just specifically to the some of the things that you just said, I think that. That I don't imagine there will ever be a time where all of the money that the city of Beaverton invests in the community in for for social good reasons. Will be done through the agency of not-for-profits. We make direct investment with a lot of organizations, for instance, we give money to MISO, we give money to Impact Beaverton, we give money to Adelante Mu Harris. We get, I mean, and for all the reasons you mentioned, because they work in a different way. The the genesis for the thinking for the not-for-profit incubator was that the Social Service Funding Committee. Kept working with not-for-profits that were struggling to operate successfully. Because they were passionate and partially clueless about how to operate a business. And so the the notion of the not-for-profit incubator was to help some of these organizations that are actually out there interacting with our community, doing service work for the community. In specific topic areas and, you know, as identified in in tonight's presentation. But to help them be more effective at it and to help them develop longer-term. Operational success, which is largely around success with fundraising. Because not-for-profits don't get venture funding the way that for-profit companies do, they get. Grant funding, they get donations, they get Oregon Community Foundation and then other organizations give to that. So I think I think that. I don't see the role of the not-for-profit incubator as being the place where all of Beaverton's investment in the in the community is going to be centered. It's where a portion of it is going to be centered, but there will always be City of Beaverton investment in other. Entities and organizations that serve the community. And many of those are the ones you've just named, in fact, we're already giving a lot of money to all of those. So I don't see a conflict. And and in terms of serving the 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 business education role that we're asking the not-for-profit incubator to perform. There is such a long history of that kind of expertise in our close partners, our local partners. At at the Oregon Startup Center. That I think, you know, as it as we did when we engaged with our close local partners to run the PRCA. I think it makes a lot of great sense to do that, if we were to. Say, okay, the not-for-profit incubator for the city of Beaverton should be operated by an organization which is centered in Portland. It 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 would be really awkward, I think, and very arms-length. And I'm not sure that we would necessarily feel comfortable that we were getting the direct local. Service and support that we would want out of that, so. TBD, but I I still lean towards, let's work with the with the entity that that's ours, that's local and that we've worked with for a very long time. And as Allison says. They're basically us, they're just a separate entity. That's all I got for now.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you for that, that is all the things I was thinking and being on the Social Services Funding Committee. We talked a lot about the nonprofit incubator, like what when we were talking about that, we weren't talking about this specific project because it didn't exist, but what we were talking about was. We saw for years and years, and you'll remember when I presented this to the council. The same people got the same money over and over and over and it became a crutch, and so we were like, well, how do we help those that? We need certain people to find out different revenue streams, different ways to help. And and it did, once we said, hey, we're going to have to cut back, it really boosted their ability to scale. And so, you know, making sure, well, yes to all the questions, but making sure that we stay in the incubation period is very important to me. Because I don't want to scale someone who's already in existence. If you've got, you know, financials that say you're over 300,000, 500,000, 700, you're not an incubator anymore, you're successful and you want to scale. You can maybe reach out for some sort of like guidance, but I think that what we really need to focus on. Are those little people who, you know, maybe they don't have a mission, but they want to find out how to have a mission, what does that look like? And and I think OTBC is a great organization to get that started because we we have this trusting relationship, we've seen their results and. And so it's it's really exciting. And so I'm trying to think if there was anything else, I think that is everything.
Thank you, Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg. Sorry, Counselor Hessen.
I mean, I hear you, I I really believe that we should open this up, I think it would be. Disingenuous to not allow different organizations to hear to just at. Maybe OTBC comes back with the best proposal, like. I have concerns if we just give it to 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 an organization that we already work with. You know, respectfully, we had three proclamations tonight, amazing proclamations, and we had a representation from one group of those three proclamations. That's okay, right, that's okay, but but that says that we're we're a little disconnected too, whether we mean to be or whether we don't. And I'm not saying OTBC isn't it, I'm just saying. Have we asked the questions? To to talk to all the different people out there, are are they, you know, and I did, I went. For the record, I went to an, or, you know, I went to their event last week and it was lovely to see some of you. And I do, I'd like us to open this up. And if if we're, if if this council feels really strongly about OTBC, which I'm going to say, I I think the right thing to do would be to open this up. Which if it opened up and came back to OTBC, that's fine. I think it's really important that we understand the DEI lens that any organization that's taking this money has. Because that's very important in this work as well.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Thank you. I really appreciate the point that a lot of the folks in our community don't have a mission statement, they probably have a mission, right, and it's just a help. And so I really like the idea that we shouldn't necessarily say. These groups, because they're not even necessarily entities yet, they're not necessarily organizations yet, they're just maybe groups, it may be one individual. I really like us kind of looking at like the most, like what type of help is needed? And and don't say that you have to have been established for so long or can only be established for so long. Or whatever to be able to participate. I hear like. I hear everything that's being said at the table today, I think it is really important. For us to have a Beaverton-centered entity because of the fact that Beaverton has unique needs, we are different from our neighboring cities. And I also think that it is really important that we put this out and don't just hand it to OT, Oregon Startup Center, because. That's not how we do most of our other work, we put it out, like when we have money to spend from the city, we put out an RFP, we put it out for opportunity for. Multiple people to to come and show why they're the most qualified or show why they are, you know, they can. Create the most impact and the most value, so I also support us putting this out to like. An RFP-type situation to find who that right partner is, and I agree, like if it comes back that it's them, it's them, but I think it's. It's typical that we would put out something like this to an RFP for our community to respond to. And I think, like, one of the things that I really like through the the discussion and the presentation is that a variety of services are needed. And so like, what does that look like for like a core working group and then just like maybe a set of services that the incubator always offers, right? How to fill out your paperwork to become a nonprofit, if that's what you want to do, you know. Having regular trainings on. How to fundraise effectively or what types of events that will get people to help them become a sustainable entity. So I I I feel like I'm kind of all over the place with where I'm at, but I do think local partnership is important. I think that it needs to be put out to our community, like put out for multiple people to to tell us why they could be our best partner for this. I think in terms of. Bullet two with those, yes, it has to be a phased approach, I don't think we can get after all of it. At once, especially knowing like we do have limited resources and so looking at like, how can we stretch this money as long as we can? Knowing that we are going to have to find other ways to fund it is really important.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, I think that, you know, OTBC. You know, my understanding is there's a lot of support that they give, the black, indigenous, people of color, you know, and they really kind of connect with that community in a way that's very. You know, centric to Beaverton because they're here, they see it, but one thing, Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg, that I don't think. We do as much of, as you say, is we give hundreds of thousands of dollars to different nonprofits. And we just don't let anybody else have that opportunity, it's the same people who get the same thing all the time and then we're like, oh, you know what, if you're not successful. Don't worry about paying it back, and that is a problem, so I mean, you know, I think that. With this particular project, when we have, you know, this funnel of idea and proven results, I'm okay with giving it to them specifically. But I I really appreciate where you're going with regard to. You know, we just don't open it up, we don't, we give the same people the same thing and it's it's something that's gotten under my skin for years. And I just, I I think we should be better about it, but I don't think this is the particular project to start with.
Counselor Tibnom.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing your perspective on this, it kind of broadened things in my head in a way that I wasn't thinking of before. This coming from someone who has responded to literally hundreds of RFPs. So acronym is very near and dear to my heart. To Counselor Sansucci's point about the the importance of having it be local to the community, I absolutely agree with that. And co-locating. And and having that those kinds of resources, I think. There's there's a bit of a deficit of that in Beaverton, so that's another reason to consider. Coupling these up is we could maximize things in all sorts of ways. I it it's a little onerous to respond to an RFP, but but. It also can help you think through exactly what your approach would be, what your methodology would be. And to get articulate about your diversity, equity and inclusion goals and they might end up being the only one who submits one. You know, it's very possible that no one else would fit if we if we do indeed create a scope that. Prescribes it to be within a certain area, like within the city limits or thereabouts. So I would I would be happy to to consider going out to bid for this. But we would have to get clear on exactly what we're asking for to to make sure that folks. Can see themselves in going after it and and, you know, who here within the local area. Has the ability or the interest or the capacity to take on something like this, is something I'd be really curious about because. OTBC was the first and really the only one that came to mind that would have the ability to pull this off. But the points he raised pulls the veil back a little bit on it. It's just broaden it and. Nothing, no harm in that.
Counselor President.
Well, I remember the the amount of time and energy it also took to develop just the scope of work for the SRO study. That was is being done by the school district and with some funding from the city. A large part of the work that has to happen is to identify exactly what we want this to be, some of these questions that that our good friends here from PSU have identified for us. Are questions we still have to answer. And so the the question is, do you do you try to answer those questions sort of in the abstract? So that you can write a good scope of work to go out to request proposals from people? Or do you decide on the organizational structure, bring in, you know, hire. Somebody to be the subject matter expert. And and have that person help develop the the rest of the program. Incidentally, that's what we did with the PRCA. We ident, we identified Chris Izukian. And then we chose, you know, the 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 Beaverton Arts Foundation to convert into the PRC management structure. But it was Chris Izukian giving us the guidance to say, no, this is really, you know, this is really the way to do it. What what we do not right now have in our hands is the subject matter expert for not-for-profit startup incubation. Except the expertise that is already in the 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 board members and the staff at at Oregon Startup Center. And possibly at some of the other partner agencies that that we've worked with and that Counselor Hessen has spoken with. Who might be able to offer some insight into that, so. You know, I I think I think we still have a task in front of us regardless of which direction we go to identify. What are the key success factors for the city of Beaverton and for the 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 entities that have given us the money to start this thing? What are the key success factors that we need to to do? And maybe we need to tackle that first.
I think we probably should also be asking, what does the federal money given to us say? Do we have the ability to go out for an RFP because we pretty much wrote it in a way that lined up a partner with it? And so I think we need to ask those questions, I don't know that money is very specific, it was given to us in a very, it wasn't just like. Here's a million dollars to go do things, a federal money comes with a lot of strings attached and so. Do we have someone that can help us answer through that, because I think that to me is the piece that is. We could say this, but the federal money might not allow us to do it.
Yeah, we don't definitively have that confirmed at this point, we want to run that up, you know, the flagpole, so to speak, but I think what Counselor. Sansucci is talking about is getting some of those policy issues addressed and then understanding. How you prioritize the partnership and the expertise of OTBC in this process. And that will be informative in terms of how we start framing this out, but we would have to come back to you because tonight we weren't kind of prepared about the RFP process, but more of the policy discussion. And certainly could work through council offline or bring this back if we need to, and we understand how quickly you need to turn this around.
Counselor Hessen.
I mean, I'm trying to think what I was thinking when I typed my name. I I think a business incubator is different than a nonprofit incubator, like it just is. And and there are the laws, like there are rules that are different from when you, like the the LLC, like it is different enough that. It would be nice to understand what other expertise is. You know, in the last five days, my conversation with anyone in the nonprofit sort of world and or the community has been. Obviously, the need for infrastructure, which this money is not necessarily for. But but the thing that we continue to hear, which is capacity building. And I just think that we, I just want us to dig a little bit deeper. If this if this is similar to the SRO thing, then I'm happy to. Subcommittee this in some way so that we can be a little bit more thoughtful. This money, you know, in my perspective, when I think of ARPA funds and and the way that it can impact our communities here in Beaverton. This is a big deal and I would feel remiss if we didn't really feel like we knew what we were talking about to get after it. And if there are specific policy questions that we need to get after right now tonight, I'm happy to answer those with you, but. I just, there's this, there's this DEI piece that I I feel deeply concerned about and I I would like to. Open this up to understand more around what different folks thinks, think we can be doing to get after this.
I think the other thing we need, Ms. Hariyama, this money comes with a timeline, we're already a year in. We already have received this money a year ago and it needs to be spent by 2023. And so I don't know if we're going to have the long road to do some of this work that the council's asking, so if you could come back with us, could we do an RFP with? The way the money was granted to us, what is the timeline? Because we're a year in already and some of those questions need to be answered, Counselor Sansucci.
Yeah, just one more quick point that I'll make, which which is that regardless of what structure is chosen, one of the great sources for. Both advisories, services for the 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 members, for the enrollees in an incubator. And one of the great sources for board members who provide guidance and and mission clarification to an entity like this. Are those larger community service not-for-profits that we work with every day? The the MISOs, the Adelantes, the Unite Oregon's, the, you know, you name them. Those are great places to mine for wisdom that can be brought to bear to advise the member companies. Not necessarily to operate the incubation, but to advise. And that is actually what happens on the for-profit side, is most of the board members, with the exception of those of us who are city councilors. Well, actually, Allison's a whole different category because of her professional work. But most of the board members are, you know, either they're investors, they're people who've worked with with companies of that sort before, I mean, they they bring this sort of professional expertise and. We will be able to tap into all these wonderful organizations that we have worked with over the decades. For that kind of advice and guidance to the the cohort companies at at not-for-profits, at the not-for-profit incubator, regardless of who's operating it.
Counselor Hessen.
Yeah, so I that's, I mean, that's an interesting point and I would just challenge us to think you're asking nonprofits. That are doing the work to advise, I I don't even think we pay them for that work and so. You know, how do we remove the like the labor of community? And so, you know, how do we remove the, like, the labor of community work in a way that allows the people who are, like, doing the work to do the work?
And it's really hard to find a not-for-profit board whose board members are paid to do what they do, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have what you need? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you to our friends at PSU. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. See ya.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to council new business.
I got one.
Go ahead.
This might be too soon, so Ms. Haryama, help me out if I'm too soon. Last week, we got to go to the Public Safety Center, and we were told that there were like, these light fixtures that allow different lights there. And I kind of jokingly was like, ooh, what if the lights could be like, green for like Eid or something, or other holidays? And so kind of brought it up. And I don't, like, I want to be thoughtful, I want to be really thoughtful of process and the right process. We don't have a policy around these kinds of things. And so we do have Eid coming up on July 10th. I'm not saying that it needs to be green by July 10th, but maybe 2023. It's a little early, so I'm going to just defer to you because I don't know what the best way to say anything is.
So typically, this could be an operational issue. One of the suggestions was to try to run it through our Arts Commission to get some guidance. The other is that if we bring back a flag policy, if we want to coordinate that with what the council direction is in the future to make sure that we're aligning kind of both of those things. So I see a little bit of a process here. First step is getting the resolutions brought forward. Second is getting a flag policy. But in the interim, that is something that we could probably do, probably under my purview right now, and just try to align it with the practice, and then come back with a recommendation from the Arts Commission as to how we want to align these two.
We'll light it up as big gay art pieces right now for Pride Month, and then we'll do it for Eid, and they'll go right along with what we're already doing. I mean, for July. I also, on this topic, want to suggest that we fly the Juneteenth flag. It's very common, and a lot of cities are starting to practice now. So if the council would be obliged to that, I think we could add that into the flag policy as well. Yeah, cool.
Yes.
You walked in halfway into that. Did you hear what I asked for? Okay. Council Hassan asked us to light the art out at the art police station for Eid, and then for any other major holiday. So the city manager is going to come back with a policy. But in the interim, is maybe going to coordinate it with the flags that are being flown, so some of those chosen colors. And I asked the city manager and the council if we could fly the Juneteenth flag. It's common, it's flying at the Capitol as well.
Mayor, did you want anything else other than just consensus that doing that flag is okay? Or did you want to blend it with any type of action?
I think maybe with a similar resolution.
Okay.
And then I think would also ask you to make a repository of council resolutions on our behalf.
Yeah, we'll end up wanting to turn this into kind of a council policy section where we'd have that, and that would also be online as well so that the public can see what you're adopting.
And that, could you have the city attorney's office do a deep dive into maybe the last 10 years of resolutions?
Sure.
So we could come back. Because the council memorializes things, and soon, we won't have our in-house expert on what we did in the past. So if we could bring forward those past resolutions, and there might be funky ones we need to not do anymore. So if the city attorney could do that, that would be great.
Very good.
Mr. City Attorney knows way more than I do about those things.
Well, I figured he has not enough work to do, so this would get him some things to do. Okay, any other council new items this evening? Okay. With that, I'm going to move us into executive session in accordance with ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, pursuant to ORS 192.6604. It is the city council's requirement that items discussed not be disclosed by media representatives or others.